Before we convene our meeting, we have a presentation of one honorary resolution. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in this presentation before taking up our agenda. Our honorary resolution today is recognizing transgender day of remembrance. And I will invite that resolution's author, Councilmember Jenkins, to give that presentation.
Good morning, Andy. All right. Hello, Nomi. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning. My name is Andrea Jenkins. I represent Ward Eight. Also represent a brilliant and beautiful community, the transgender nonconforming community. And I'm so thrilled to have so many community members and organizational leaders here with me today as we read this resolution and observe the National Transgender Day of Remembrance, which is a solemn remembrance, solemn resolution that we unfortunately-
Councilmember? Councilmember? Councilmember Jenkins? Your mic is on, but could you hold it closer to your mouth, please?
Absolutely. So, just a little context. The transgender, gender nonconforming community has been building a movement, I would say, since 1969 and before when Sylvia Rivera and- Marsha P. Johnson, thank you, Andy, kicked off the Stonewall Revolution, which was the beginning of the gay rights movement. And since then, we have had to struggle within the LGBT community and more broadly with the general population. And unfortunately, now we have a federal administration that is dead set on limiting transgender and nonconforming people's rights to exist in our society. And so, without further ado, I will read this resolution, observing November 20th as the transgender day of remembrance. Whereas sadly and inhumanely, at least 27 transgender and gender expansive people have already been killed in the United States in 2024, including through gun and interpersonal violence. Whereas we face an epidemic of violence against transgender women of color in the United States with Black and Latinx transgendered women representing the vast majority of these fatalities and experiencing violence at disproportionately higher rates. And whereas too often, these murders and nonviolent attacks go unreported and/or misreported, transgender women of color face violence every day and fear turning to law enforcement to help due to furthering interactions of violence, victim blaming, stigmaization, and harmful characterizations. And whereas transgender and gender nonconforming people whom we've lost in the last year due to violence perpetrated against them were neighbors, students, coworkers, friends, and family members whose lives were taken from their loved ones and from their communities. And whereas transgender day of remembrance is also observed as transgender day of resilience to celebrate the resilience and power of transgender nonconforming people still living, fighting for their safety, and protecting each other. And whereas transgender and gender nonconforming people deserve the resources and protections necessary to be celebrated in life and not only in death. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby observe November 20th, 2024 as transgender day of remembrance in acknowledging and mourning the lives of transgender and gender nonconforming people we've lost this year due to violence and recognize that there is so much work ahead in our duties to help create a safer, more equitable city for our transgender and gender nonconforming community members. Thank you. And, you know, I will just say that I am personally on two national organizations, the Human Rights Campaign and Advocates for Transgender Equality. And we will be fighting each and every day to ensure that our voices are heard, that our communities are safe and thriving. And particularly for our young transgender folks who are being deeply impacted by the rhetoric that is being spewed by our federal government and the fight continues. I want to invite some of my friends and/or colleagues to be able to share a few words. Anybody, Dr. Kepfer, Roxanne?
Sure, I will. Hey, everyone, I'm Rox with our space in the Minnesota Transgender Health Coalition. I think it's especially a hard year for us this year as we mourn the deaths of at least two of our transgender members right here in the metro area. And so, if you know a transgender person or a gender nonconforming person, be especially kind to them in the upcoming days and weeks as we all set in with the new administration upcoming and mourn and celebrate how amazing trans people are.
Building on what Rox had shared, my name is Kat Roan Deshi, Pronouns Executive Director for Out Front Minnesota, our state's largest LGBTQ advocacy organization. I want to take a moment to just acknowledge Savannah Ryan-Williams and Liara Kaylee Sai, who we lost over this last year since our last T door. I know how much light and joy they brought into their spaces and to the folks that they knew, and they're deeply missed. And I think especially now as we face a more hostile federal government environment, it's incumbent on places like Minneapolis, on states like Minnesota, to stand up for our values. Two years ago, this city passed a resolution making Minneapolis a transgender refuge to help protect against attacks that we were seeing in other states against access to rights and healthcare and protections. And in this moment, we are going to be tested. And it is incumbent on everyone, whether that is through positions of power or in your everyday lives, to take that moment to stand up for vulnerable communities, whether that's the members of the transgender community, our undocumented friends and neighbors, or other folks who may be made vulnerable by this next administration. So I urge all of us, regardless of where we sit in this room, to take those actions, to step up and to stand with those who need support. And to our trans youth, know that our communities will get through this, that there are many people fighting for you, and that your life is good and beautiful and celebrated, and that there will be a better world for you that we will build together.
Anyone else want to share some thoughts, comments? No? Well, I really appreciate everyone showing up to be a part of this to ensure that the city of Minneapolis acknowledges, recognizes, and affirms transgender nonconforming lives, not only in the city of Minneapolis, but throughout the country. So, thank you all. And let's move in a little bit so we can get a beautiful photo. You guys look amazing.
At this time, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for November 14th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison is absent. Councilmember Kosky?
Present.
Councilmember Wansley is absent. Councilmember Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Present.
Councilmember Cashman?
Present.
Councilmember Osman?
Present.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
Councilmember Chavez?
Present.
Councilmember Vitak?
Present.
Vice President Chugtai?
Present.
President Payne?
Present.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and the agenda is adopted. The next item is acceptance of the minutes from our regular meeting on October 31st. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is the presentation of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our Administration and Enterprise Oversight Committee, which will be presented by its vice chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The AEO Committee brings forward 25 items for approval today. The first three are gifts acceptances of a routine nature. Item number four is the 2024 Property Tax Special Assessments and Adjustments of Delinquent Utility Charges. Item number five is the Legislative Directive for Public Safety Capital Projects. Item number six is a bid for Convention Center remodeling. Item number seven is a bid for Phillips Traffic Safety Project. Item number eight is the low bid for 30th Avenue South Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. The next two, item numbers nine and 10, are the fire remediation and cleanup and improvement projects at the Old Third Precinct, 3,000 Mini Haha. Item number 11 is the bid for the Fulton Residential ADA Ped Ramp Improvements. Item number 12 is a contract amendment with Verant Americas for the 311 system. Item number 13 are contracts for legal services for our bond transactions. Item number 14 is the State of Minnesota grant for the Fire Department Training Apparatus Expansion Project. Item number 14 is the large grant acceptance of $2.5 million from the state. Item number 15 is a small contract for design services for that expansion. Item number 16 is the lease amendment with Minneapolis Public Schools for the space at 4131 Dupont Avenue North. Item number 17 is a legal settlement for personal injury accident case. Item number 18 is a legal worker's compensation settlement for Michael Nelson. Item 19, a legal settlement, worker's compensation claim for Paul Delwo. Item number nine, and number 20, a legal settlement for the worker's compensation claim of Isabel Moreno. And item 21, the legal settlement for worker's compensation of Andrew Peterson. I submit all of these for approval.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Chavez?
Thank you, Council President Payne. I'd just like to move number 18 and number 19 for a separate vote, just so it can be easier for the clerks to track my no vote.
Councilmember Chavez has requested a separate vote for 18 and 19. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Councilmember Rainville?
Thank you, Chair. I want to speak briefly to item two, the gift from Caliber Catering. This was for an event at the Convention Center in honor of the Veterans Club that was formed in, for our employees, the veterans of the city of Minneapolis, the Yellow Ribbon Designation. We're the first city in Minnesota to be recognized as a Yellow Ribbon City, which offers support to the veterans. And I want to express my thanks to not only Caliber Catering, but to Barbara O'Brien for helping through this. It's been a two-year process. And for Henry Jarvinian, my counsel aide. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on- Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Council President.
Microphone.
Thank you. Speaker management, it's not working for me, but I did want to just quick speak to item number 10, bid for 3,000 Mini Haha Avenue Building Improvement Project. Just to note for the public, I know that many community members care about the blight of the corner of 3,000 Mini Haha being remedied. I think it's really important to lift this up. This bid will allow for us to move on the improvement project, make sure that the, that new windows, doors, hardware, skylights, construction of East Vestibule, and extra exterior repairs are done. And the main purpose of this project is to provide a fully enclosed, safe and secure building to allow for the exterior of the barriers around the site. So I think this is really great that we're passing this today. We're continuing to move forward, and I'm just excited to bring back a thriving corner for our community over in greater and downtown Longfellow.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk, you're in the queue?
We were using that to track Councilmember Chowdhury's time, sorry.
Gotcha. Okay. Seeing no further discussion on the remainder of the AO agenda, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except for 18 and 19.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up items 18 and 19. Is there any discussion on those items? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
No.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
No.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are nine ayes and two nays.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. The next report is from our Budget Committee, and that report will be presented by that committee's chair, Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget Committee is bringing forward five items today. Item number one is directing staff to provide a report related to municipal revenue sources. Item number two is approving an increase to the appointed nonrepresented and politically appointed employee salary schedules for 2025. Item number three is adopting findings, approving the establishment of and approving a salary schedule for the appointed position in the Clerk's Office of Chief Assistant City Clerk. Item number four is adopting findings, approving the establishment of and passage of resolution, approving a salary schedule for an appointed position in the City Clerk's Office of Director of Administration. And item number five is passage of three resolutions amending the 2024 General Appropriation Resolution related to the American Rescue Plan Act reappropriation. I will move approval of the items one, three, four, and five. And I will move to refer item number two back to committee for a little bit more work with administration staff.
Vice President Chugtai has moved approval of the report with the exception of item two to refer back to committee. Is there any discussion? I saw Councilmember Cashman in queue-
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about item number two.
Okay, we'll take that up separately, perhaps. Let's just, let's call Councilmember Vitak.
Thank you. Number two, why are we referring it back?
We'll have a discussion on that. Let's take up items one, three, four, and five for a vote, and then we can have a discussion on item number two. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the report? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on all items except item number two.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries, and those items are approved. Next, we will take up item number two, and I will recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this item, I wonder if CVP Chugtai could help us understand how many employees will or would be receiving the 4% raise and how much money it totals to?
Vice President Chugtai?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, these are three, three items that, that represent the appointed employees, nonrepresented employees, and politically appointed employees within our city. Items, subitem number one, two, and three reflect that appropriately. And item number one, the appointed employees represent about 100 and, just under 150 employees here at the city. And these raises cost about $1 million. Item number two represents about 500, and the, those raises account for about $1.5 million. Item number three represents 40 employees, and those raises represent about 100 and, just under $150,000. So a total of like 2.7 million.
Thank you. Is that information on the LEMS file?
It is. Okay. That's available in the LEMS file.
I just want to say, I think I have some questions about this as well because our council staff are actually in this category. So our department is, you know, their staff or their raise here is at risk, but it's also a lot more employees. And I would like to read into it a little bit more, so I'll just support it going back to committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman. I'll first recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Vitak.
Thank you. So this is going back because councilmembers need more information and didn't get enough information in committee? Or in the LEMS file that is attached to this item?
Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, and I will, I will note, I had a chance to talk with COO Anderson Keller about this item yesterday. She was able to get some information over yesterday evening. So I just want to make sure that, to like review some additional information. Then I will note, we have our final meeting at the next Budget Committee where we will take final action on this item. I know during committee, we had a really long public hearing, which is awesome. We had a lot of people come in and express their perspectives on the city budget at our second public hearing on the city budget. And so, we weren't able to get to discussion on, on some of these items in the interest of time and trying to make sure we are not leaving a lot of items for, for our final meeting. But this is just one item I'm hoping to, to have some further discussion on in committee.
I think that's awesome. You should get all the information you need, in particular in committee.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an additional, additional question that I had here that I hope will take up in budget is, you know, why we're giving a 4% raise to these employees and not to the AFME employees, which was in the budget for this year. So that was a question that I had that I hope our city staff can answer in committee.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on referring item number two back to the Budget Committee.
Councilmember Ellison?
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano?
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury?
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez?
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak?
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai?
Aye.
President Payne?
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the full report is adopted. Next, we, we have the report from our Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee, which will be given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Business, Housing, and Zoning Committee is bringing forward 18 items. Item one is approving a liquor license for Star Gazer. Item two is approving a liquor license for Queer Immunity. Item three is approving an interim use permit for our Savior's Community Services. Item four is a passage of resolution approving 2024 levy for special assessment. Item five is a passage of resolution approving the emergency stabilization land sale. Item six is a passage of resolution approving the land sale at 3415 Second Street North. Item seven is denying an appeal regarding the decision of the zoning board of adjustments. Item eight is deleting from the agenda the liquor license renovation for Jewel of India. Item nine is deleting from the agenda the liquor license and tobacco license renovation for Breakfast Bar of Minnesota. Item 10 is approving three liquor license. Item 11 is approving seven liquor license renewals. Item 12 is approving a one gambling license and deleting from the agenda item 12.2, the gambling license for Coon Rabbit's Lions. Item 13 is approving a great street loan for Bliss Creek Creative. Item 14 is approving a great street loan for Native American Community Clinic. Item 15 is approving a master grant contract with the state of, for employment-related services. Item 16 is a passage of resolution approving the carryforward of tax-exempt housing revenue bond from 2024. Item 17 is approving technical changes to the zoning code of ordinance. Item 18 is approving the- Item eighteen is approving the four D affordable housing revisions. This is being forwarded without recommendation. I'll move everything for approval except eight, nine, and twelve point two, which I move to delete from the agenda, and eighteen, which I pull for discussion.
Councilmember Osman has moved approval of the committee's report minus the items that were deleted and pulling item eighteen for separate vote and discussion. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the agenda? Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to speak to item number thirteen briefly and thank staff for working with Pillsbury House and Theater for their new project called Pillsbury Community Commons, which will provide jobs for young people in our community in the theater industry. But even beyond that, it'll be amazing addition to the Chicago Avenue and George Floyd Square as it will be a center for, I think, creative ideas, a center for social services, as well as new theater that will be accessible and incredible for our community. So, congratulations to Pillsbury Community Commons. Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I also wanted to make a comment on item number thirteen, the Great Streets Gap Financing Loan for Pillsbury Creative Commons for the Phase One part of the project. This is a budget amendment that I brought forward along with Councilmember Jenkins last year through the budget process, and just very glad to see the work of our community come to fruition near the George Floyd Square area. It's going to be a great project that's going to help many of our youth and many of our community members, and it's an exciting thing that we get to be very proud of. I also am excited about item number fourteen, another Great Streets Gap Financing Loan for the Native American Community Clinic, which will help with the new clinic space and affordable housing above that will help an additional three thousand patients per year. So, it's a good project in the Phillips area as well.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on items run through seventeen, including the deletions of number eight, nine, and twelve point two.
Councilmember Ellison.
This is for the full?
This is for items one through seventeen with eight and nine being the denials as recommended, and item twelve point two deleted. Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number eighteen, and I will recognize Councilmember Osman.
Thank you so much, Council President. This item was moved without recommendation. We had a length discussion. I want to thank the staff. The change only apply, I believe, one bedroom to sufficient unit studio. That change was made by the staff, and there has been a lot of work done by the staff and length discussion. I talked to the staff yesterday, and they haven't really raised any, any concern or anyone who has contacted with them, so I will move this item for approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved this item for approval. I will recognize Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I was one of the councilmembers who supported moving this without recommendation. I know that staff has heard some concerns from stakeholders in our communities, individuals. However, upon a, a significant amount of discussion about this change, moving the affordable housing, the four D program from sixty percent to fifty percent AMI for this application round, and understanding that with the state statute change that brought up the tax reduction for those that enroll their units into affordable housing preservation through this program, we've seen an explosion of applicants. I, I understand why our, our department is interested in bringing it to fifty percent AMI, seeing if we can lock in more units into affordability at a deeper affordable rate, especially if the median market rate is, in, in some parts of our city, below sixty percent AMI at present. I do want this body to consider next year after these applications are done to see the difference between applications that we receive once this change is made. Our department staff have shared with me and the Biz Committee that this is something that they're kind of testing out, right? So, this is like a data collection opportunity to understand how this affects the number of affordable units that are preserved. So, I think we should put in a lot of consideration next year once the applications are in, and then I also think we should look at where those units in our city are enrolled for preservation. I think we want to see if units are just getting concentrated in certain parts of the city. And I think it's good in the city of Minneapolis if we're seeing naturally occurring affordable housing preserved in my ward, in the second ward, in the first ward, just so we, we have opportunities for residents to, no matter their income, to live wherever they want to be. So, those are the comments I wanted to make. I will be supporting this today.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I was very supportive of this when I heard about it from staff, and since then have heard a lot from, of disappointment, I guess, from affordable housing providers about why would we limit the amount of people who can participate in this very successful program. I also, like Councilmember Chowdhury, think that we deserve like an after action. Maybe we can work on a legislative directive together to actually have some evaluation of what happens with this change. In addition to the dispersal of different four D units throughout the city, I also would like to know what the property tax revenue scenarios are because we are, with this change, you know, limiting the amount of, of units that can participate in the program, and it's partially because we have, you know, property tax shortfall right now, and we don't want to contribute to increasing that gap that we're trying to fill. And I also want to understand how much staff capacity we have for this program and whether it's enough to process all of the blossoming, blooming amount of applications that we're getting and whether, you know, their department's being staffed appropriately. I think the four D program is a really great affordable housing tool that we have, and it's proving to be so. So, you know, with that, I am going to vote for this as well today, and hopefully, you know, Councilmember Chowdhury and I and others in the Biz Committee can work on making sure we get some data and an inflection point mid next year to make sure we can assess whether this change really was achieving the outcomes that it's intended for.
Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too was in committee and voted to afford this without recommendation after hearing a lot of testimony, and, and in fact, since that time, there's been some really compelling arguments from affordable housing providers for the cost benefit of preserving affordable housing versus building new ones. So, I am going to side with staff on this and vote for it, but I also want to give staff a heads up that we're expecting some good data and a continued conversation on this because the gap between what the affordable housing developers say is, is tremendous. And it, it appears on face value that we could build, save more housing by not doing this, but let's, let's go forward, let's agree with our staff, and let's monitor this. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I think I was the person who made the motion to move this for, without recommendation, and, you know, I, I guess I would just comment, one of the interesting aspects of this that I think Councilmember Chowdhury touched on is that we do currently have a great number of units that are under sixty percent of the area median income. And so, this naturally occurring affordable housing is, is happening, and this will give us an opportunity to try to bring more people into the, to the process. But I do support the idea brought forward by Councilmembers Chowdhury and Cashman to really get a report to understand how this is going to be impacting the market, and so I will be supporting this today and also supporting any future legislative directives to understand better how this project, how this program is working. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item number eighteen.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries and the full report is adopted. The next report is from our Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Climate and Infrastructure Committee is bringing forward thirteen items. Item one, a large block event permit for 2024 Holodazzle. Item two, a large block event permit for Welcome Downtown Target. Item three, authorizing a cooperative agreement with Metro Transit for mobility hub planning work. Item four, authorizing a cooperative agreement with MinDOT and Hennepin County for traffic signal work on Chunk Highway 121. Item five, authorizing acceptance of a grant from MinDOT for the Phillips Traffic Safety Project and Anderson United Safe Routes to School. Item six is accepting federal grant funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Minnesota Department of Transportation for the Safe Streets for All Program. Item seven is accepting federal and state transportation grant funding for various city transportation projects. Item eight is adopting the City of Minneapolis and Park Board Stormwater Management Program. Item nine is concurring with the City Engineers' variance request for the Whittier International Elementary Safe Routes to School Project. Item ten is authorizing the submission of a grant application for site development of a biochar production facility. Item eleven is adjusting the Capital Improvement Program appropriation and revenue for construction change orders. Item twelve is authorizing the submission of an application for federal transportation funds through the 2025 Raise Program. And item thirteen is authorizing the submission of an application for the IIJA Match Program, and I'll move approval of all of the items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Committee of the Whole, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole is bringing forward one item, which is approving a legislative directive related to updates on the court-enforceable legal settlement with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, including the role of the independent evaluator. I'll move approval of this item.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are twelve ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. The final report will be offered by our Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee is bringing forward three items. Item number one is Civil Rights Commission Appointments. Item number two is the Pollution Control Annual Registration Ordinance. And item number three, it's a towards zero death grant from the state of Minnesota through the City of Crystal Police Department to improve safety of Minneapolis roads. Item number four is a partner agreement with the University of Minnesota Medical Center. Item number five is school-based mental health, Hennepin County Grant. Item number six is a memorandum of understanding for the Lake Street Safety Center. Item number seven is a comprehensive plan amendment with the Hennepin County Multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item number eight is Urban Area Security Initiative Grant for enhancing emergency management capabilities. Item number nine is Municipal Grocery Stores Legislative Directive. Item number ten is a contract amendment with Fairview Health Services for laboratory testing services associated with the city's school-based clinics. Item number eleven is a master grant contract with the Minnesota Department of Health for health services, and item number twelve is a Labor Standards Board Resolution. With that, Mr. President, I'll move approval of items one through eleven, and I'll move item number twelve out for, I'll separate that out for discussion.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of items run through eleven, separating item twelve for a separate vote and discussion. Is there any discussion on items one through eleven? Councilmember Vitak, I see in queue? No, okay. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Just wanted to acknowledge that we're appointing new members to the Civil Rights Commission and wanted to thank David Jones from Ward Seven for stepping into that role. It is a commission that has a lot of work and a lot of time-consuming work, and so just wanted to appreciate him for, for applying and congratulate him on his appointment.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm wondering if I can get, or we can get, a little more information about the municipal grocery store legislative directive, I think?
I believe that legislative directive is authored by Councilmember Wandsley. Is there, are there any co-authors? Oh, okay. Councilmember Cashman.
I can just take, thank you, President Payne. I can just take a quick stab at this based on, I had a conversation with Councilmember Wandsley about this legislative directive, and it sounds like there's a issue of students by the University of Minnesota living in a food desert. And so, and I'm sure many of us in our wards have a similar situation, and so the goal was to have our policy and research team look into different models from around the country about how to support more community-based grocery store options like cooperatives or municipal grocery stores that exist in some places, and other ways to ensure like affordable and fresh food in all areas of the city. So, hope that answers a little bit what it's about.
Thank you. So, I guess, is the intent that the city would own and operate grocery stores?
I believe it's a legislative directive that would inquire about the potentiality of that, but it would just simply be a report, is my understanding.
Mr. President, if I could just add one little piece to that, I think it's a legislative directive asking staff to come back with research on comparable jurisdictions that are addressing this issue of food availability in their communities. So, it's a compare and contrast with the state of Minneapolis compared to other communities, if, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just wanted to quickly talk about the MOU for the Lake Street Safety Center. This is a project that many of our community members have been working on for many years and just want to let the public know that the Lake Street Safety Center is open. It is next to the light rail, and it is a good asset to our community, so I'm very happy about the MOU with our different community partners.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm going to just take a second to also talk about the Lake Street. I'm gonna just take a second to also talk about the Lake Street Safety Center, but put my colleague, Councilmember Chavez, on the spot really quick. I just wanna thank him for his years of work in bringing together his residents, working with the Lake Street Greenway Partnership, working with the Family Partnership, working with Violence Interrupters, working with me as one of his colleagues, Councilmember Kosky, the mayor, and breathing a lot of energy into getting a Lake Street Safety Center moving forward. This is amazing asset. This is great to have in the 3rd precinct, finally, an in-person place where people can get non-emergency safety services, where they can file a police report, where they can get 3-1-1 services. And I thank the city staff that worked really hard on this, Director Amanda Harrington, she poured in a lot of work, our 3-1-1 department and staff, we have two staff members that'll be working out of there. And we celebrated the opening, but this is our first opportunity to kind of speak at it at the council meeting and just, I just, I thank everyone for their work on this. This is a tremendous, tremendous thing that we've moved forward in a very short amount of time. It was the last budget cycle we allocated this funding to make this happen, so, thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on items 1 through 11.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries and those items are adopted. Next, we will take up item number 12, and I will call on Councilmember Vito.
Thank you, President Payne. Colleagues, I let you know earlier this week that I would be bringing this motion forward. I am motioning to refer the Labor Standards Board Resolution to Committee of the Whole meeting on December 3rd and to direct the city clerk to provide a notice and schedule for a public comment period at that hearing. I've heard from lots of folks that they would like a public hearing on the Labor Standards Board. I also, you know, I just wanted to say, I've heard colleagues loud and clear this week talk about needing more information, and I need more information about this myself. There's probably somewhere between eight and 10 amendments before us this morning on the Labor Standards Resolution. So I would like time to talk to Ward 4 workers and business owners about this. Just last night, I was at a meeting with probably seven Ward 4 residents who are business owners and workers who had no idea about what was coming before this council today, but have seen things on the news. And I just think if we're gonna start this board, we started out the right way. We started with belief in it and believing in that, and having belief in that means that people get to have a voice. This is about bringing a table together, and we don't want this to be a bad table before it even gets started. So I would like an opportunity, another cycle, for us to hear from community about this, all communities, not just one side of the issue, all sides of the issue. And I would also like some time to talk through these amendments and this entire resolution because I did get the language fairly lately, and as a council member, I did not want to appear to be on a particular side of it, so I tried to give advocates the opportunity to speak out and talk to Ward 4 residents. I would like time to organize around the issue in my ward and see where people are, and I really would appreciate my colleagues' support on this to give the people in Minneapolis a voice with a public hearing and time to understand exactly what the Labor Standards Board is gonna be and what seat they want at this table.
Councilmember Vito has made a motion to refer this back to committee. Is there a second?
Second.
I will call on Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you. So I did second this motion because I do believe that we need more time, and especially to allow the public to weigh in on this. To not have a public hearing would be really bad democracy, it'd be bad government, it would be incredibly bad transparency for what we're trying to do. If this, this idea goes forward, as Councilmember Vito said, we should all be at the table on that, everybody, the business community, the workers. We see, we see how many people are out here today, we see the interest in this. Let's slow this down a little, give more time, and especially so we can review all the amendments that were thrown on us overnight. So I would vote, invite my colleagues to vote for this, and let's slow this down and have more discussions from the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I too support Councilmember Vito's motion to refer back to committee. As an author of two amendments, then I deeply apologize to my colleagues, I haven't had an opportunity to share with them, with you all, and really would like to have an opportunity to understand some of the other amendments that are being proposed. And, you know, we must get this right. And I believe a public hearing should be afforded to this very, a complicated resolution as well as the fact that we literally had two public hearings this week relative to issues that, while are deeply important, would not have the same impact as this particular resolution. So I support the motion to refer back to the Committee of the Whole.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I owned and operated my own local small business for over a decade, and I can tell you firsthand that small business owners, ownership is demanding as it gets. Every day is filled with new challenges, and as the owner, you're the one responsible for facing them head-on. It's a constant cycle of decision-making, problem-solving, and managing competing priorities, and the pressure never lets up. There's no downtime, no room to step back, and even when things are going well, there's always another task or issue to handle. It's not just about working hard, it's about committing everything you've got, day in and day out, to ensure the business stays afloat and thrives. Earlier this week, a few of our local small business owners shared the challenges they're facing and the concerns they have with this proposal. I didn't just hear their concerns, I felt them deeply because those were the same battles I fought every day as a business owner. It's been two years since Mayor Fry stood chanting on the city hall steps loudly, proudly, calling for the creation of a Labor Standards Board. A number of us stood on those steps too. Council President Payne, Council Vice President Chugtai, Councilmembers Wandsley, Rainville, Vito, Ellison, Osman, Chavez, and Palmisano. Now times and positions have changed. Since then, Council President Payne and I have had to fight for the funding needed to sustain the Labor Standards Coenforcement Program every budget cycle. I've worked tires tirelessly to secure resources for the pilot program I established with the city's Labor Standards Enforcement Division and the Workplace Justice Lab, which assists small businesses in navigating bureaucracy and meeting labor standards. And now we find ourselves at odds over the Labor Standards Board, the very initiative we once championed and promised to deliver. Over the past two years, I worked with the mayor and then Councilmembers Chugtai and Chowdhury and Cashman on this proposal. I was involved in discussions and deliberations with unions, I listened to workers' stories, I engaged with business owners and associations, and as this proposal came together, it became clear to me that this was an opportunity for us to come together and drive meaningful change with employers and workers, for employers and workers. But I understand that there are still small and large business owners and business associations that feel they haven't had the opportunity to speak publicly about this proposal, to ask more questions and get answers, and to see the value that I see. So for that reason, I do support referring this to the next COW meeting to allow time for that engagement and feedback. And I ask that if this passes, that those business owners and associations come to the table, have an open dialogue, and give specific constructive feedback on approving this proposal. Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I will not support a motion to send this back to committee. I do think that there are some business owners in this discourse who, no matter which changes to this, no matter how many public comment periods, no matter how many delays, no matter how many additional conversations, will never support this board. And that's something that we have to come to terms with. It's disappointing, sure, but there are also a lot of business organizations and businesses who do support this, many of whom I have spoken to. As councilmembers have said, this has been in the works since 2022, well before I was on the council, and even just this year, as a co-author of this, we had in March a listening session with over 200 attendees, we had a listening session in April with 50-plus attendees, we had a stakeholder meeting in July with representatives from all the groups who might participate on this board. We had a meeting with Bi-Pac restaurateurs in October because they're under a lot of pressure in a slim-margin industry and feeling especially scared about what could happen from this board. I had 10-plus sit-down coffee meetings with individuals on this, I've had, I don't know how many phone conversations, done about six or seven media interviews, there have been 20 stories on this just within the last week, if you look at Google News. So to say that more conversations need to be had, I think is just disingenuous at this point, and those conversations will be had on the board, and that's a great place for them to happen, so not supporting it at further delay.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I won't be supporting a delay today as well. The notice for this resolution, this work, was January 25th, 2024, and there were many points throughout this process and a whole year prior before I got on this council to engage with the Labor Standards Board Resolution. And as a council member, if there's a policy that I have questions about, I know that I'm not always gonna be guaranteed a briefing at my door. And so I go out and I ask my fellow colleagues, like, can we talk about what your policy is? I'm seeing it in the news, I have a lot of questions, and a lot of council members did come and sit down and talk to me, and some didn't. And, you know, we all get to make that choice, but there was time to have that conversation over and over again. We even had a public meeting with workers where all council members were invited to join. There was opportunities there. I'll also say that this is, there's a little bit of a paradox here. This, this is an advisory board to an advisory board, essentially, right? Like, we have many advisory boards, this is just creating a table for policy recommendations with actually a lot of red tape, right? So in a lot of ways, it's not this giant, huge thing that is going to pour out an onslaught of labor standards and regulations day in and day out. However, the, the wonderful and great thing about this that takes a step forward for the city is giving workers a say, giving them an equal place at the table. And that matters. That matters here. And I encourage my colleagues to, to take a look at the presentation that we gave them at the Public, Public Health and Safety Committee. Go back and look at the slides while we're up here, that was one point in order to engage. I'll also share, on top of what Councilmember Cashman shared, is that we had a meeting with downtown council, the Chamber of Commerce, Minnesota Hospitality, where we gave them a copy of the resolution. We went line by line, line by line, on this work together because that mattered to us. We had multiple meetings with them. I had multiple meetings with Minnesota Hospitality. I met with business owners in my ward. I had business owners come to the table at my office hours. We engaged, and this is about creating equal say. Three parts to a Labor Standards Board. To create a sectoral work group, they'll have to work for six months at the maximum and then close their work, and then have to vote, one from each sector, employee representative, employer representative, and community stakeholder will have to vote affirmatively in favor to recommend a policy to a body that needs to vote in seven and then override a veto by nine. This is, this is already putting a lot of work on workers to make sure that their voice can be even heard to say, I need a labor standard in my workplace. They have to sit face-to-face with their employer, and the employer has to sit face-to-face with them. So the engagement has been done. Delaying this in order to either gut and dilute this already very red-tape-oriented policy that we have, that workers and community members and high-road employers have agreed to, or to have actors that are unwilling to even pass a Labor Standards Board for another three weeks just doesn't make sense to me. And I, I appreciate the time, and I look forward to our discussion today here in committee, and I also understand that all of the colleagues up here care deeply about the workers in our city and the businesses in our city, and that's why we're having this conversation today.
Councilmember Vito.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm, I'm a little upset that you didn't call out Councilmember Kosky for ascribing motive, one, because I don't know what rally she's talking about, Councilmember Vito being there and asking for Labor Standards Board. I've never taken a position on Labor Standards Board either way publicly, so I don't know what she's talking about, and I would appreciate it in the future that you call out people the same way you do me when they ascribe motive. That is the definition of ascribing motive, when you yell it out at me every chance you get. So in the future, please do so to Councilmember Kosky as well. Again, I just wanna say to my colleagues, this is not about tearing this apart, this is not about changing anyone's vote on where this is gonna go, this is about hearing from people. I don't know how many times I've had to say in this chambers that North Siders feel left out. This is one of those situations. I've had contact with two organizers on this issue. Over a year ago, I asked them to organize in North Minneapolis, gave them a list of specific workers and business owners to contact in North Minneapolis. I have, in the last two weeks, talked to every single person on that list and have been told, no one reached out to me. I have not had any contact, I did not know. I watched the news. Whoever said that there's a lot of news stories going on, that is correct, and it's scary to people. And if we want people to apply to be on this commission, if we want people to be engaged around this issue, what is wrong with hearing from them? No one is saying, end it, to go away. I don't want that, I'm not asking for that. What I'm asking is for opportunity for people in Minneapolis to be heard. When I met with organizers around this issue, maybe two and a half, three years ago, what we did have a conversation about is how there should be a coalition of people coming to us as a council, supporting this. It shouldn't be two organizations or three organizations, it should be a coalition of people. I have not seen that, and I definitely have not seen any organizing or engagement in the ward that I represent. And that's what I'm asking for here. I'm asking for the black and brown and women business owners that I met with last night to have an opportunity to come and speak at a public hearing if they choose so. I don't even know where they are on the issue. I don't know. I wanna know, though, and I want anybody else who wants time. All the engagement I've had from people this week, in the last week and a half, is just about a public hearing. We deserve, the people of Minneapolis deserve that, business owners, workers, people who visit, everyone deserves to be heard. That is all I'm asking for here. There should be zero argument over if we wanna hear from the people of Minneapolis or not. Just like we've been hearing from the organizers around having it, we should hear. The most successful board or commission we have that people apply to in large numbers is because we communicate it, is because we put effort into getting people organized around the issue. And so why not start out? We, we- We, we, the last board and commission that we had and had an overwhelming amount of people apply to and want to be on was because of community engagement, was because we allowed for opportunity for them to have a voice. Let's do the same. Please, I'm asking you all, let's just have an opportunity for people to speak. That's it. That's all I'm asking for here. I'm not saying change your position. I'm not saying that anything needs to be done differently. We have a, a stack of amendments before us that has been set as committee work for this whole year. So let's just send it back to committee and have a public hearing. That's all I'm asking.
Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you, Council President. I was just gonna wait and talk about this on my motion that I'm bringing forward. But I, I do want to talk to the folks that are here. First, this is democracy. We have the restaurants on the back, and we have the labor union up front. And it's, it's a beautiful thing. And I was one of those councilmembers that stood on the steps of the City Hall that supported and continue to really raise the voice of having employers and employee coming together and creating this labor standard board. And I wanted to express and say that large East African community business owners expressed to me on Tuesday that they have been excluded in the discussion. I think the, the power of having community engagement is very important. Some of the businesses in our community are already struggling with some challenges and them being left out, especially Cramell Mall or Cedar Riverside or different areas in that community. They don't know what's going on. There are a lot of misinformation out there, too, that they are afraid of. And for them to understand what's in the document and participate is very important. And I just wanted to say that it's really good to have a voice for large minority, people of color, low-paying hospitality jobs. Those folks have to have a voice, and they have to have an opportunity to sit down with employers, to have a conversation and come together. And as a council, it's very important for us to receive those voices. And we want, we don't want those voices to be, you know, divided. We want them to be united and, and come up. The employer has a huge role to play around. They cannot be left alone. And same thing with employer and expertise. Those are very important voices. But the most important thing is my community, the people I represent, have not been engaged. Have not been, they've expressed it, that they don't really know what's going on. So I do actually support having, circling back and having one cycle delay and have more discussion on this. And we might have a huge support of passing a labor standard board. Thank you.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, President Payne. I just wanted to make a comment about, Councilmember Vitale said I was implying motive. I was speaking the truth. And I can show you and everybody here on my phone that there is a, well, then was Twitter tweet. And it says, "Today I stood with Coalition of Labor Unions, Community Leaders, and Elected Officials to highlight the potential impact of a local labor standards board." And there's a photo, and this is from Mayor Jacob Frye's account. And the individuals I stated were, are all in this photo. I can see all of us there. I am also going to send everyone in a Teams a link that there was a Star Tribune article that says, "Councilmembers Jason Chavez, I should tugtie Jeremiah Ellison, Emily Kosky, Jamal Osmond, Lene Palmisano, Elliot Payne, Michael Rainville, and Latricia Vitale, and Robin Wonsley attended in favor of the proposal." And I will send that via Teams. Thank you.
Can I respond, please? Councilmember Vitale stood on the steps of City Hall in support of workers. However, someone, we had a huge rally in support of workers. However, someone used that photo, you can ask any advocate in here for a labor standards board. I have never, ever taken a position on the labor standards board. If the mayor, Councilmember Kosky, or anyone else used the photo with me in it, you've never seen that on my social media. You've never heard me say that.
Let's, let's move on.
So she can say whatever she wants to, but the facts are the facts.
Let's move on.
In support of workers every day, all day. Councilmember Kosky, that's what I support.
I'm gonna call on Councilmember Chavez, and we need to follow the queue.
Thank you. I, I don't support a delay. You know, I, this is an advisory board. Again, I'm gonna keep on mentioning this, an advisory board. I don't understand what the drama, the performance of, of being, from, from businesses in the city of Minneapolis, big business corporations that are frustrated about an advisory board, as if the world is gonna fall apart, you know? This is an opportunity to say to our residents that we support workers. This vote is pro-worker or not, period, at the end of the day. Do we support our workers or not? That is something that this vote is gonna signify to residents of Minneapolis. You know, my mother had to work three frickin' jobs, three frickin' jobs, to barely afford rent, to barely be able to put food on the table, to barely be able to live her life and to support us as her children. Three jobs to barely make it by in this city, growing up my entire life, so I can share a room with my brother my whole adult life, and I was very proud of that. But she had to work three frickin' jobs, more than 80 hours a week, to barely make it by. And what we're saying is that those folks do not matter in the city of Minneapolis, and they do not deserve to have a voice and seat at the table. An advisory board is gonna give these folks, these community members, undocumented immigrants, folks in the city of Minneapolis that matter, an opportunity to have a seat at the table. I don't understand why it is controversial to have an advisory board that says, "People in the city of Minneapolis, workers in our city, matter." I don't. I don't believe it. I know what's going on. It's corporations that run this city. It's corporations that scare people in this body. It's corporations that run checks. It's corporations that fear monger and, and scare residents in the city of Minneapolis into making decisions to say that we do not support workers. I'm sorry. I support workers, period. I support Uber and Lyft drivers. I support increasing the minimum, of the $15 minimum wage to $25 an hour, and I do not need permissions from a corporation to do that today. But if corporations do not want to be a part of this advisory board, by all means, whatever, I'll bring the policy forward without your input. You should be thankful that you're getting a seat at the table to influence policy in the city of Minneapolis. You should be thankful that you're giving an opportunity to sit with workers to develop policy that is fiscally sound, that is gonna improve lives of residents. I am sorry. I am not gonna support a delay. I support this policy. I even wish it was stronger. I even wish it was stronger, because workers in the city of Minneapolis matter. And I am doing this for people that look like my mom, that had to work three jobs just to barely make it by in the city of Minneapolis, where she had, she had restaurants and corporations like McDonald's, which I don't understand how we conceding that minority-owned businesses to begin with, but corporations like McDonald's, corporations like McDonald's, and other businesses treating her horrendously. When you had these businesses, particularly, and my own family members and immigrant community members, who experienced racist comments in their workplace, and nothing gets done to get addressed. When you have these businesses steal people's wages, and nothing is getting done to address that by the employer. When you have these businesses mistreating these workers. I'm sorry. I support this advisory board, period. I do not support a delay. Let's get this done and move on to actually improving the lives of Minneapolis residents.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Mr. Chair, the details here are important, as it is with any policy, and I know we all take that responsibility seriously. I support a balanced board, and maybe what I see as a balanced labor standards board is different from what you all see as a balanced labor standards board. The elements here that I see, that I have heard, add more bureaucracy, no doubt about it. It says, "Here's a place for you. Here's a table. Don't come to actual us as people in elected seats at city council." No, go through this other bureaucratic process. That is what I've heard about it, no doubt about it. I'm hearing from little, local business owners who are often BIPOC. And yes, some of those are McDonald's business owners who are BIPOC. And they have told me their stories on helping their, their employees through COVID, and I've heard from their workers saying the same thing. You know, at committee, I asked about cost, and I don't know that I got a full answer about how much this costs. This cannot take place without any cost, especially the way that it works with this tripartite of these different tables that would be run, I think, by city staff. But I was essentially told that we would use the budget process to address it. Well, that doesn't make me comfortable, because you haven't shared what trade-offs. You haven't shared what your budget amendment is and what you'll be removing from the recommended budget in order to fund all of the work that would be needed to stand this body up. You can't ask for a briefing when you didn't even know about this until it got added to an agenda after agenda setting. I asked for a public comment, period, and I asked the authors that as soon as I saw it on the published agenda, about 48 hours before the meeting itself. That's also when this was made. The details of this were made available to the public, made available to some of the different associations that you see here today. It is frankly absurd to think that I know, before agenda setting, to be able to bring something and put it in limbs for a public comment period I didn't even know we were talking about. And then to say that I would need to write it down on a piece of paper to delay for one cycle for a public comment period? I have more confidence in my colleagues than that to understand that motion on the floor. I also stood up for workers. I also believe we could evolve our Workplace Advisory Committee to be better, absolutely. But when Councilmember Kosky calls out the mayor or other colleagues, it also ascribes motivation. Mr. Chair, that's a violation of council rules, and these call-outs are a gross misuse of an elected position. It's called campaigning for another seat while you're still in your current seat, and it is wrong.
I'm gonna ask a clerk to call the roll on the motion to delay this, or refer this back to committee of the hall.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
No.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
No.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are six ayes and six nays.
That motion fails. Next, we will take up the underlying motion, and I will recognize Councilmember Osmond.
Thank you, Council President. There's a motion on...
Mr. President, before we get started with amendments, we don't have a motion to approve that was brought forward. It was pulled from the issue, so I think we should start with making an affirmative motion to approve what came out of committee, and then it can be amended.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to move approval of item number 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that item's been properly moved and seconded. Now I will recognize Councilmember Osmond.
Oh, thank you so much, Council President. I am bringing forward a motion that's front of you, and this will address the the voting side of it, which is changes from majority to two-thirds, full membership voting. As I mentioned, you know, the East African business and workers emphasize the need of consensus, consensus building between employee and employers. And I just want to make sure that as a council member, when we receive recommendation, we want that recommendation to be at least some close united. We need a great recommendation. We don't want, as I understand, there's like a 15-vote members. If seven members vote no, and eight members vote yes, is that a great recommendation? Probably not. So that's why I'm hoping that the two-thirds will help, better outcome and better recommendation from that, from that which we receive. I remember the conversation and the process during the destabilization work group, and that did not went very well. So I just want to make sure that if this document's moving forward, it has a strong creation and process to make sure that those folks that are participating, which is the employers, which is the employees, and also which are the expertise and people with knowledge and labor, meet and talk and come up with a recommendation to move forward, to create policy in the future for our workers. And I think this is one of the solutions that I brought forward. So I'm hoping my councilmembers, my colleagues could support this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Osmond has moved to amend the underlying resolution with the printout before you. Is there a second on this motion? It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Councilmember Osmond's amendment here actually has a lot of amendments in it, some of which I support and are actually reflected in another amendment that I'm bringing forward that I worked on with the clerks and the city attorney and the authors and, and emailed out in advance. So I just want to say that while I'm not supporting this amendment today, I do think that there's some pieces of what you've put forward here that I think are really good. And it relates to how the sectoral work group is soliciting input from business owners in order to make sure that the recommendations that the sectoral work groups do, do have information from business owners in that sector and adequate information. So just wanted to thank you for that piece. And also on the voting threshold, we actually spent a lot of time with this, and this is one of the things that came out of conversation earlier this summer and decided to make sure that a member of the employer, employee, and community stakeholder group would all have to vote in the affirmative for the recommendation to pass. So that's the check and balance that we put into the policy to ensure consensus. So I believe that is covered. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Osmond, for bringing some of these forward. I've expressed my concern at committee, too, about what the composition is of community stakeholder group, why they would be given the same amount of seats as employers and employees, and would these community stakeholders be getting in-between relationships, working-union relationships between employers and employees. While I have a bit of concern about Part Seven, about selecting certified employer organizations to collect in-person surveys and online surveys of employers in the applicable sector being identified, that seems like a lot of work. And again, about the cost, I'm not saying that it wouldn't be worth it to have professional surveying done. I'm just saying, what would be the cost and what is the trade-off we are making in the city budget to get this started? But given the composition of this board, including the community stakeholders, I do think that the two-thirds of the full membership is a wise motion. So thank you, Councilmember Osmond, for bringing these changes that make this slightly better.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Osmond, for just engaging with the authors and then bringing this forward. I really appreciate you working on finding a way that, like, you feel is best to make this work. So I just appreciate you. However, I, I won't be able to support this amendment today, simply for the fact that as, as city council members, we're, we're elected officials that are accountable to the public with a formalized legislative process, with places for public input on ordinances, and we have checks and ballots, yet we do not govern with a two-thirds majority to get things done here. We, we require a simple majority, and I don't think it's logical. And I don't think it's logical to hold an advisory board to that, a higher standard than us. And then also in our democracy, because we're talking a lot about democracy today, as we should, when you're at the ballot box and you're voting for someone to represent you, to yield that power, that also does not require a two-thirds majority. It's a simple majority. And also, this advisory board is going to have to take multiple votes in order for a recommendation to get back to our body. The Labor Standards Board as a whole will have to vote to create a sectoral work group. The sectoral work group will then have to vote as a whole in a simple majority with the requirement that business, worker, maybe a consumer, or maybe that community stakeholder is an academic or a regulatory body, whoever's there, at least one of them has to vote. And then it has to go back to that larger Labor Standards Board. And then they have to vote in a simple majority. And then it comes to us, and then we have to say, do we want to do a notice of introduction? Yes, we do. Notice it. Go through the process, a committee vote, another simple majority, and then this council needs to vote, another simple majority. If it gets vetoed, then we get to a two-thirds majority. So I think this is... I understand the intent. I don't think it's going to achieve what the intent is, which is consensus, and that's why we worked together as authors and made the compromise around having each of those, each of the tripartite vote together in the sectoral work group. And I think this would actually be pretty detrimental and ensure that policy recommendations never come to our body. And again, I'll just bring it back to this. Workers deserve to have a say. And in institutions, oftentimes, they don't get one, a formalized place, and that's just what we're doing, an equal say to every party.
Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also wanted to thank Councilmember Osman for, you know, engaging with the authors and continuing to remain in conversation with us as you're putting together this amendment. I really see the desire to make sure that the recommendations coming to the body are driven by consensus, are strong, are have buy-in from different stakeholders, from employers, from employees, and from the broader community. I think, you know, as Councilmember Chowdhury was highlighting, the requirement that at least one employer, at least one employee, at least one community stakeholder serving on a sectoral work group has to consent to recommendations before they make their way to the council by way of the Labor Standards Board. Those are, that's the type of thing that encourages dialogue, collaboration, consensus building among the three different parties, right? And if passing recommendations and making them to council requires at least one person from each party to work together, that drives better consensus building. It drives better policy outcomes, and we can trust when something comes to us that it included voices of all of the parties at the table. And then, you know, I would really concur with, I think it's hypocritical perhaps, weird perhaps, for us to hold an advisory body to an advisory body to a higher standard than we are held to, to a higher standard than we win our elections by, to a higher standard than how we like do anything here on this dais. And so I unfortunately won't be supporting this today and, you know, encourage you to continue to engage with us as we move forward through these next steps. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman.
I just want to make one point, that I think two-thirds makes sense. I'll give you an example. The way council vice presidents say that each person, I guess each group have to have a one person, and what if employers all get together and say, we're not going to vote? We're never going to get... But the two-thirds could pass without the employer's input sometimes. Yeah, it's 10 votes, and we're building 15, the way I understand. Right. So anyways, I think that was my intention. It's something that we get a recommendation that's sound, that has have a lot of thoughtful behind it. And yeah, so that is what I'm getting into, but thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question. There's many votes that we take, even today, that need a two-thirds majority vote, and I think there's a category for that. And I was curious if our city clerk or maybe our city attorney could just briefly remind us what votes we take that require two-thirds vote, because there's a lot of them.
Mr. Clerk, is that information you have readily available?
Mr. President, there are types of actions that require a higher vote threshold by the council. Many of them are two-thirds, but not all of them. Typically, when a higher vote threshold is required, it's because it affects or can impact the rights of the members of the body. So generally, parliamentary procedure says anytime the rights of members could be impacted, the vote threshold rises, and the standard is usually a two-thirds vote, though it could be higher. For example, if the council wants to by ordinance amend the city charter, as you know, that requires 13, requires every single member of the council to be in support of it. So that's a unanimous affirmative vote. To reconsider a mayor's veto, something that's the last item on the agenda, requires that two-thirds vote of the entire body. And so there are opportunities for higher vote thresholds. They're usually tied to rights of the members.
So, Mr. Chair, my point is that there are several things that we do here that require two-thirds majority vote. It's, I'll leave it at that, but to say if we were to add in another third of this body of unelected members that aren't in these things like labor negotiations, I would definitely want every vote we take to be a two-thirds majority vote, because these people aren't representing anybody in that negotiation.
Mr. Chair, may I just add? I think the question was...
Mr. Attorney.
I just looked at the city council's own rules, and then there is an appendix at the end that has a chart of required vote totals. And I wish there was an easy way for me to send this. I'm a Luddite when it comes to technology. I apologize. But there are, but yes, as the clerk noted, there are many vote types that require a two-thirds or more vote threshold, acceptance of gifts to municipalities, grants, to amend the rules of the city council, certain zoning ordinance amendments, rezonings require a two-thirds vote. For example, change the grade of a street. So the chart goes through everything, and so I, just to, for point of information for the council, if you want to reference that, it's at the very end of the council rules.
Councilmember Chavez.
Can the city attorneys remind me how much, what was the vote threshold for a minimum wage? Seven votes? An ordinance?
Oh, to me, sorry. President Payne, Councilmember Chavez, yes, an ordinance vote when it gets to council is a...
For sure. Okay, I just keep hearing six, two-thirds being thrown around like as if that's normal practice here. Most ordinance here are seven votes, it's an ordinance. I think the goal of this policy is to get recommendations from the Labor Standards Board to then possibly establish an ordinance that usually requires seven votes, a simple majority. Most things require seven votes that we do in the city of Minneapolis, which is just majority.
I put myself in queue just to add, just the role of our boards and commissions that we have in the city. I think our city, and the clerk will probably, you don't need to confirm this one way or the other, we have a lot of boards and commissions. It's not exact, it's not a normal default mode for a local jurisdiction to operate. Minneapolis has a long tradition of community engagement, civic engagement, and we enable that civic engagement through these boards and commissions. It is not required that a city have boards and commissions. The minimum requirement is that you have elected leaders who can pass some of these types of ordinances. And that's even unique for us. We're a charter city rather than a statutory city. And so the rules that we live by in this city are really grounded in our city charter. That's what affords us the ability to set minimum wage, establish basic worker standards, and any other ordinance or regulation that we might pass. There are arguments to just abolish boards and commissions, that we just don't need them. We have an elected body called the city council to bring forward any recommendation, whether it's around minimum wage, fair scheduling, wage protection. We have the total authority to do that right now with a simple majority vote of this body. So, and I'll also add, kind of similar to Councilmember Kosky, I ran a small business before I ran for office. My small business worked with the city. I was a contractor at the city. And one of my first projects was to create the business portal, which was a resource to help entrepreneurs navigate city process. And when I was working at the staff level, I didn't have the authority to change regulations. All I could do is help those regulations be more accessible, understandable, easier to navigate through, you know, web design. That's essentially what we did. Now that I'm in a position where I can actually look at those regulations, I can just uniquely, by my, on my own accord, based on all of my experience as a small business owner myself, let alone the conversations I have with my constituents, I can propose any number of changes to our regulations, not just more regulations, but simpler regulations, less regulations. I don't do that because I don't think it's wise for me to sit here and think that I have all the answers. It's how all of our boards and commissions have emerged, and we have a total of, Mr. Clerk, coming, boards and commissions total?
Fifty-seven.
We have 57 boards and commissions, and they are all focused on very specific policy areas where you can bring experts to the table who can bring forward recommendations. Most of our boards and commissions don't have a vote threshold. They can just send us a resolution without a vote, generally speaking. Do they? Simple vote? All right. The point is, is that we are the body that enacts legislation, not the boards and commissions. And so regardless of the process by which those recommendations get to our desk, whether that's through our own personal life experience or through a really impactful conversation with our constituents, or formally through a board and commission, ultimately that authority is vested with us. And so I think that this debate about two-thirds versus a simple majority is kind of losing sight of what our responsibility is in the legislative process and how that responsibility remains with us. And in fact, this is a resolution rather than an ordinance, largely through our city attorney's advice, that we can't delegate our authority to create policy to a board or commission. So there wasn't as much of a purpose of creating an ordinance around it because all that the board, that this body can do is send us a recommendation for us to consider, for us to consider. So we're asking for a simple majority for us to consider an idea, not to take that idea up, not to pass that idea, but to consider it. And it may not be one that can pass a simple majority of this body. So I just want to ground us in that. And with that, I see no one else in queue, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the Osman amendment.
Councilmember Allison.
This is on the Osman amendment.
The Osman amendment.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitak.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
No.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are five ayes and seven nays.
That amendment fails. We are back to the underlying resolution, and I will recognize Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. You know, first, let me just start my comments by saying, as a member of local SEIU Local 284, I 100% support workers. I want to see a Labor Standards Board that is fair, that is equitable, and that works in support of workers. And so I want to bring forward two amendments, but we can take them one at a time. The first one is an amendment to change the reporting or oversight committee, department, rather, from the Department of Civil Rights to the Office of Public Service. I think we've heard from the Department of Civil Rights that they don't have the expertise at this time to be able to administer this body and this body of work. And so I am hoping that we can shift this to the Office of Public Service until such time as the Civil Rights Department is staffed and has the expertise to be able to address the issues and concerns on the Labor Standards Board.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved an amendment. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. I will recognize Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to speak on this amendment to move the administration of this, the implementation of this Labor Standards Board from the Civil Rights Department to the Office of Public Service. I would just say first that there are no departments within the administration right now that are staffed to, that have a staff member designated to them to manage a Labor Standards Board, no matter where it goes within the administration as of right now. That then needs to come along with, that needs to come along with resources to implement and staff such a board. The reality is that the Civil Rights Department are the experts in labor standards within our enterprise, and the Civil Rights Department has been involved in every labor standard that the city has created in recent years, the ones that we in particular celebrate and are the leaders in our state in enacting. We want the experts of labor standards to be the ones that have the closest relationship to supporting this body of work. And then I would also additionally add, the Civil Rights Department is a department that workers trust. The Labor Standards Enforcement Division within the Civil Rights Department is one that workers trust. And we, and that trust has been built over years. If we want participation from low-wage workers who have the hardest time accessing government, that's just a fact, right, of the stakeholders we're defining, a low-wage worker has a far harder time accessing this sort of bureaucratic system than someone who works for a regulatory agency. We should be moving, we should continue to keep this board in, within this department. So appreciate the thought behind wanting to move it up to the Office of Public Service, which also, by the way, happens to be a newer department, has a smaller staff. But I, it is, I think it is really important that this remains in the Department of Civil Rights.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on what I just heard, isn't CPED within the Office of Public Service?
Yes.
Thank you. So I want to thank Councilmember Jenkins for bringing this forward. I had also mentioned this concern in committee. I think that today's answer from the Labor Standards Board authors is pretty consistent with what I heard in committee. Civil Rights has enforcement authority. They investigate wage theft, violations of our sick and safe time, violations of our wage, our minimum wage laws. I know I created some of these ordinances. They have no, Civil Rights has no economic analysts. There are no economic analysts in the Civil Rights Department. They're not a creative body of economic development like CPED most certainly is. And for that reason, I am very sure that something like this should sit within CPED, and so the Office of Public Service is an umbrella organization for such a thing, and this feels right to me. Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the Jenkins Amendment.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
No.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are six ayes and six nays.
That fails. We will return back to the underlying resolution. I believe Councilmember Jenkins has a second amendment. Councilmember Jenkins, do you want to speak to that?
Thank you, President Payne. I want to bring forward an amendment, again, that I, that I hope can strengthen this resolution today. I really wish my colleagues would have sent this back to committee so we can do this really important work in committee instead of doing it at the city council level, but here we are. So I'm bringing an amendment that I, I, I think can add a little more fairness and a little more trust into this process for the many, many small businesses that are owned by women and people of color who I have been meeting with, talking to, and literally every time, I've met with the proponents of this amendment multiple times. Each time, it was a concept I support and supported the concept in those conversations. However, there was never any specific language until, I think, two Fridays ago when I received the actual language. And so I think that if we can change the makeup of this body to have a ten-member body that is representative of the employees and the employers, I think would make a much better scenario for this body to be effective, to be trusted, and to bring forward recommendations to the city council in a fair and equitable way. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved this amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just want to note that we did get this, it wasn't that there was a request to send this back to committee, it's that we got this literally after, like, what the scheduled time for council was to start, which was, we got this literally after 9:30. So I just wanted the public to understand that. Second, I just have a question of, if Councilmember Jenkins can yield for a question, why she's striking seat six, and just for the public to know what it says, a representative of employees in the city, which include low-wage employees and/or employee organizations representing the workplace interests of low-wage employees?
Councilmember Jenkins, did you want to speak to that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, Councilmember Jenkins, I'm wondering if you can explain to the public, just because they don't, they're not seeing this amendment you're bringing forward because it was brought in after 9:30 a.m., why you're striking a representative of employees in the city, which includes low-wage employees and/or employee organizations representing the workplace interests of low-wage employees?
So the, the amendment requires low-wage employees and employers to be at the table. So I'm not sure if I understand your question.
There's a strike through of seat six that says, and I'll repeat again, a representative of employees in the city, which includes low-wage employees and/or employee organizations representing the workplace interests of low-wage employees that you're striking. And I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning behind that. That's it. You're bringing forward an amendment, so I'm just asking a question on the reasoning. If you don't have an answer to that, that's okay. I won't be supporting this amendment.
Again, this is work that we should be doing in committee so that we can have these broad discussions. But this amendment does not eliminate low-wage workers from being a part of this body.
It does eliminate a position, and again, I'll repeat it for the first time, a representative of employees in the city, which is, includes low-wage employees and/or employee organizations representing the workplace interests of low-wage workers, an important component of working people in the city of Minneapolis. And you're striking that, and I still don't have an answer to that. But again, we don't have to answer that. That's totally okay. I won't be supporting this amendment because I support working people.
As do I, Councilmember.
Let's move on to Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins, just for engaging with this, with this resolution. Appreciate you bringing some work forward here today. Yeah, I mean, I think we could say it all day long, like, we don't want to do committee work in council. However, this council has been doing that, and councils past do that as well. Like, there's public recordings and meetings of that before, I'm getting flashbacks to when we did the work on $15 on cigarettes. But we got that work done, got that work done, and that's a part of why we have this meeting together. I'll just start off by saying, while, while I understand the intent, which is, it seems to be removing the community stakeholder seats, I think the point that Councilmember Chavez was making is that there was a lot of intention in crafting the, the seats specifically to different types of employees because we realize that there's not a, a one-size-fit-all voice for employees, right? Like, low-wage employees is this type of specificity that we put in to this resolution. A representative of unionized employees was a type of employee that we put in, a type of worker. Representative of non-unionized employees, non-unionized workers, because we know that their experiences are different, and their experiences are different across sectors, and that's why we get sector-specific, so we don't have one-size-fit-all policy recommendations and we bring experts together. I won't be able to support this today. I, I think getting rid of the community stakeholder seat, unfortunately, I, I think that's a mistake. We want to have the input of community stakeholders and sectoral work groups. I think it's a miss to say we don't want the input of consumers, like downtown resident office workers, parents, if we're looking at the childcare sector, regulators, like the Department of Labor and Industry from the state of Minnesota that could be brought into the fold. And then also academics that also can be brought into the fold, right? Like, we have R1 University, Research One University in our own city that I think would be a really important voice. This group has the ability to be more neutral, to ensure that a board is not just consistently deadlocked, and most importantly, community stakeholders ensure that what is being explored considers and can give input on the impacts of Minneapolis broadly. The example of the Workers' Compensation Advisory Council is flawed. It couldn't even agree on a recommendation for a presumptive eligibility for COVID for those in close contact with others during the height of the pandemic. And I think that is just one example to say that having a, a third aspect to the structure encourages consensus. And you can't, like, in the real world, right, like, a workplace is not just the employee and the employer, right? There's a, there's a consumer, there is experts that are studying, studying the workforce and its economic impacts every, every day. And right now, in, in the United States, we're experiencing very large market shifts, and things are changing rapidly and quickly over the years that are impacting workers daily. So having that third aspect, I think, is really important to make sure that this board actually does thoughtful consensus-building work.
Mr. Chair and my colleagues, what was being asked as to why it was taken up, out, is up top on page two. The second page of this amendment talks about, up on the very top, it mirrors bargaining tables, and it also includes all of the language about low-wage workers. What I see this as is a shift from the balance that I was talking about back in committee and now here, about taking this down to an even more like a bargaining table with employees and employers. The community stakeholders are great at the tables part of the Labor Standards Board, but this makes that language more clear. I, I'm not sure why one of my colleagues seemed to insinuate, or dare say, dare I say, ascribe motivation to Councilmember Jenkins, but that couldn't be more false. And I would appreciate it being called out when it happens, Mr. Chair.
All right. I just want to speak to the ascribing motivations. I need, I'm getting called out by several folks for chairing this meeting, and I will speak to that item. I want to just make this distinct, important distinction between making statements of fact and ascribing motivations. It is a statement of fact that the seat six is a strike through here. It's a statement of fact that a number of us stood on steps. And there's a distinction between those statements of fact and why that fact exists. And so I think this is really important to make that distinction. Councilmember Vitah.
It, it is a statement of facts that I said on step, that I stood on steps, but it is not a statement of fact that I stood on steps in support of a Labor Standards Board. Councilmember Kosky referred to a tweet that the mayor put out, not Councilmember Vitah, and the mayor didn't even say he supported the Labor Standards Board. He said potential or something like that.
Mr. Clark.
I don't even know what she's talking about, but that's not a fact. Secondly, what I got in queue for is, I am growing tired, Council President Payne, of how you allow black women to be treated on this council. You are so quick, it's like in your nature to call me out for ascribing motives. When black women get talked down to, when motives are ascribed towards us, when we want to speak up, just like everybody else does, you cannot control yourself from trying to stop and control what we say out of our mouths, what we just all witnessed. I think sometimes you may forget that this is on camera. What we all just witnessed was Councilmember Jenkins being talked down to because of her position on her amendment. You said zero, nothing. You actually just came back and said that if it's factual, it's okay for people to say something. What I'm saying is factual too, when you stopped me, is facts to me? This has got to end. The way you allow, in your leadership position, for black women to be treated here is disgusting. I'm sick of listening to it. I'm, I'm sick of being treated second-class to your friends, to people who you think should have a voice above me. It needs to end. It's disgusting. I'm sick of it. And I've talked to you in private about it. I've sent you emails. I've talked to you. I've tried to do everything I can. The other, the only way left in this is to publicly talk about how you allow black women to be treated on this council under your leadership. Councilmember Jenkins was the president before, never happened. Everybody got treated fairly. You are not fair, and you treat black women differently.
Councilmember Vitah, I have frankly allowed you to speak much more fully than I would otherwise would because I, I'm very actually sensitive to that fact, and I actually haven't decorum-checked you today.
Do something about it. Don't say anything about it.
Mr. Clark.
Be different, be better.
Mr. President.
I'm sick of it.
I think it's important that maybe I offer some feedback to the entire council, to all members, and I'm quoting here from our parliamentary authority Roberts rules, "The question of decorum is really about respecting the body as a whole, and every member has a duty to uphold the rights of all other members. That's not just the singular responsibility of the president or the chair based on whether this is council or committee. All members of the body are expected to uphold the rights of all other members and to help enforce the rules and decorum. And during debate or discussion, members must refrain from attacking or ascribing motives to others." Here's what the book says, "When a question is pending, a member can condemn the nature or the potential consequences of a proposed measure in strong terms, but must avoid personalities and under no circumstances attack or question the motives of another member." What that means is statements that start with, "This is my perspective, this is my opinion, this is how I interpret this," are great. The moment you invoke another member's name, whether that's a council member or the mayor, who has the same rights in debate under our rules as council members, we are probably in the gray zone of ascribing motive. The easiest way to stay out of that zone and to minimize these allegations or challenges or problems that we have is to speak for yourself, don't invoke someone else's name, don't, don't mention someone else, and, and use sort of those "I" statements. This is what I feel, this is my motion, and not get into, you said, you did, you did, you know, those types of things are going to always, I think, put this body in an awkward position. And you especially, Mr. President, I feel for you in this position of trying to preside and officiate over a body. These are strong issues, they are important issues, they are worthy of debate and discussion in full, and they deserve the respect of every member in respecting the community that you represent. So I would ask each of you to remember, you were put here by voters, by the electorate, to represent them, to represent their voices and their interests. That doesn't mean you have to always agree, but it means you have to respect each other in debate, just like you respect your constituents and you respect every member of the community and all segments of our community made up of many, many different communities. So would, would provide that advice.
That means be a leader to everybody.
And let's move on. Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking to the amendment in front of us, I disagree that we should be creating or mimicking a bargaining table with employers and employees. That is not the goal here, so having that third party that includes consumers, consumer advocacy, nonprofits, that's a really important piece of this, is better for the recommendations that will come out of this board. Just speaking from the industries that I hear the most about, condo industry, childcare industry, I think that the, you know, residents of condos could sit on that sectoral board, or the parents at a childcare center could serve on that board, in that it would improve the quality of the recommendations that are brought forward. So I won't be supporting this amendment.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this amendment simply tries to really bring forth the people who are deeply engaged in these issues, the employees and the employers. It, it strikes all of the designated seats, and subsequently, low-income workers can be appointed to this body. There is no exclusion of who those representatives can be. So to say that, you know, the strike through eliminates the opportunity for low-wage workers to be involved in this body, I think, is a misstatement, and those people are absolutely have access to being, having a seat on this body.
Councilmember Chavez.
I just, I, I literally read what was on the amendment, so I just want the public to know that what I read four times is literally what the amendment says, so it is an misstatement I read off the page that's in front of me.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like policy debate. I think that's what we should do. We should debate the policy. We're not going to agree, and that's okay, but I think debating policy as a body together, that's what our, that's what our city wants to see. So in the spirit of debate, I'll say, I hear your point, Councilmember Jenkins. However, I do think it is a step in inclusion to carve out a role for a specified group that oftentimes gets overlooked. Like, I think it's a part of equity to say, low-wage employee, non-unionized employee, unionized employee. I think that matters. And that's why I like the specifications that exist. That's what the intent of the policy is. Again, I get what you're, I get what you're trying to do, and I get that it's coming from a good place, but from a policy perspective, I just disagree with it.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the second Jenkins amendment.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Nay.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitale.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
No.
President Payne.
No.
There are five ayes and seven nays.
That amendment fails. Next, we are back on the underlying resolution. I will recognize Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, Council President, and I just want to say that, you know, we, this is not a perfect document. As you can tell, how our votes are divided, I think the best option would have been to delay it, to have the community engagement. I had my concern with how some of the small-owned minority businesses have expressed what this document is. But at the end of the day, I stand for workers. I want to make sure workers have a table. I want to make sure workers have a voice. There are a lot of workers in my community, minority community, immigrant community, that work in the hospitality, and for them, having a voice is very important to me. And I also want to make sure that the organizers, the unions, make sure that you are engaging these businesses, make sure that, you know, they have an important voice in that. At the same time, I do not want to leave employers. There are a lot of small-owned businesses that employ money folks in our community, and they're trying to survive. They went through a lot of last four years. They went through, you know, the civil unrest, they went through economic, the epidemic, you name it. These small businesses also deserve the respect and also have a position on the table. So with my decision today, I will be supporting the underlying motion, and I want to make sure that it's not a perfect document, but we have to understand where we are and come together and to make sure that we are creating a perfect work group that will give us advice. If it's divided like this, when we create that, I don't think that whatever comes out will be perfect. So I just want to make sure I stand for workers. I will support the underlying motion on this, but it's not perfect, so thank you.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President, and apologies to all. We do have one more amendment to take up. This amendment, it does add under the duties of a sectoral work group that a city business technical assistance program provider, so BTAP provider, will conduct in-person and online survey of employers in the applicable sector being studied. Bringing this forward with Councilmember Kosky because we do have an incredible list of 25 BTAP providers at the city, including the African Development Center that's Somali-speaking, redesign, Lake Street Council has been very, very helpful in the Uptown neighborhood. I mean, it goes on. And these providers that we contract with at the city through our CPED department would be able to contribute to the information that is brought forward in the sectoral work group to inform policy, and so I will ask for your support on this amendment.
Councilmember Cashman has moved the amendment that is before you. It is co-authored by Councilmember Kosky, so it doesn't need a proper second, and I will recognize Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne, and thank you, Councilmember Cashman, on partnering on this amendment. This amendment broadens the scope of representation on the Labor Standards Board, ensuring that a wider array of stakeholders, including those firsthand experienced running a business, are part of the conversation. This inclusion of employer surveys will allow us to gather valuable insights into the specific resources and support businesses need to navigate labor compliance, which in turn improves the lives of our workers. This change will help us better understand the challenges small businesses face and identify ways to improve the overall business and worker climate in Minneapolis. Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Kosky and Cashman, for bringing this amendment forward. Just going to say to Councilmember Cashman, appreciate all the debate that we had leading up to this amendment happening. I asked you a lot of, a lot of questions, I pushed back, and we had a great discussion. I'm going to be supporting this today. I think this is a good amendment. I think it ensures that the employer, the business, part of this tripartite structure, their voice is amplified and equalized within the structure, and I think it will help us get into the nuances that small local businesses face and the impacts that they take on as the market shifts. And I also think, like, it'll, it'll help the recommendation come out, but we might get some valuable information that might inspire some policy change, budget amendments that could be in service to supporting local businesses that are struggling. And I don't think this is in competition with the voices of workers, so I'm just communicating that out to the public and also the different, different community members that are in this room. Like, I think this is a fair amendment. I think this, this helps equalize and then also, like, in a fair way strengthen the local business voice.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Mr. Chair, I will also speak in favor of this amendment. I don't see this to be in conflict with workers. I think if anything, it will work to try and grab input from all the many people working hard to sustain a business in our city. A lot of people who don't even know about this, let alone whose voices are never going to be heard here, they're never going to be able to take the time out to come and speak to us here in council chambers, or even at these work groups, or even at these tables. I guess my concern is this is such a small accommodation made in a flawed labor board setup. It saddens me a little. I will do this because this is the principle that makes this slightly better, but it feels sad to me that this is the only motion that's going to amend this surprise, seemingly perfect new body by my colleagues today.
Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm a little confused about this. So is this an amendment to potentially ask these small business owners, more than likely people of color businesses, to spend additional time and provide free labor? Is there a dollar amount attached to this? What are, how, what it, I mean, I feel like this is just another way of asking people of color to do more work for free.
Councilmember Cashman, did you want to speak to that?
Thank you, President Payne. The duties of the sectoral work group do say that a certified worker organization would survey employees in that sector, and so this offers parody and says that a BTAP provider would survey employers in that sector. And of course, that work will be completely voluntary. They do not have to engage in, in that survey, but they will have the opportunity to, if they want their voice to be heard on the sector.
So more free labor for people of color. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the Cashman-Kosky amendment.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and one nay.
That carries, and that amendment is adopted. Now we will take up the underlying resolution as amended, and I will recognize Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. Again, I want to reiterate my support for workers. And while I disagree that this resolution is a perfect document, I've tried to bring amendments to strengthen it. I have been a small business owner and continue to be a small business owner. I founded and operated a catering business for 10 years in this city. I can tell you that the margins on any restaurant in this city are incredibly thin. I've heard from several small businesses in my ward, all of them owned by people of color and/or women, and they are deeply challenged by this resolution as it is worded, as am I. I will be reluctantly supporting this underlying amendment, and I will also be bringing forward amendments to try to strengthen this as this work continues.
Councilmember Kosky.
Thank you, Council President Payne and colleagues. I want to center us in our new reality. With Donald Trump's reelection and Republicans securing control of the House and Senate, there is now a clear path to enactment of Project 2025, his policy agenda that we know of. It includes regressive policy shifts that will significantly undermine workers' rights, including efforts to diminish the power of labor unions and deregulate critical protections in the workplace. This attack on workers' rights at the highest level of government will have far-reaching consequences, consequences that will reach us here in Minneapolis. It will affect our economy, our workforce, and the fairness and integrity we strive to uphold in every workplace. It will threaten to undermine the very rights we fought so hard to secure. Our commitment to labor rights will soon be put to the test. Now more than ever, we must remain steadfast, united, and firm in our values. This resolution presents an opportunity to take meaningful action. It creates a platform for diverse stakeholders, including business owners, including workers, and including community representatives, to collaborate on labor policy and drive meaningful change. I support this resolution, not just as a response to our shifting political landscape, but as a proactive step forward in safeguarding our economy, our workforce, and our work environment. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I need to point out a dichotomy that makes me deeply uncomfortable. We cannot say to labor, "This is a transformational change in how we operate," and then tell industry or concerned small business owners, people who are struggling to have a business in our city, "Oh, no, this is like a small, one of our dozens of boards and commissions, like our Advisory Committee on Aging." That has happened. That feels duplicitous. This board is not balanced, we do not know the cost, and we have not heard from the people that it will affect. I'm not ready to vote on this, so I'll be voting no today.
Councilmember Vitale.
I'm deeply disappointed that this council couldn't wait. I appreciate what Councilmember Chowdhury said about doing the work on 15 minimum for tobacco in council, because over 50 advocates on all sides of that issue waited over a month after that vote was delayed because of a staff area, actually waited almost two months because of a staff era. So I really do appreciate being able to do that work in council when we needed to because folks had advocated for, I mean, I'd advocated for that policy, so I know that had been over two years. So thank you so much for doing the work that day in the council meeting on behalf of the over 50 organizations who advocated for that policy. And the stakeholders were, even for the first time in the history of my work, even store owners advocating for a stronger tobacco policy. So thank you, and I appreciate my colleagues for that, that work in council. But what's happened today is different. We've seen, we've had engagement from folks who have said they haven't been heard, they just wanted a public hearing, they just wanted this council to hear their side, and that's people on all sides of this issue. This had nothing to do with one side or the other. I've heard from people on all sides, and more than anything, I've heard from people who come from the most underserved and underrepresented communities in this city. And for me to vote against them having a voice goes against everything I am as a person. I would never do that. I couldn't sleep at night if I did that. And I'm disappointed that this council didn't take that request serious enough to delay this for some time to hear from people. This Labor Standards Board could have been a good thing. We could have had folks on the same page, we could have had time to get people to understand. I know there's some cynicism around there, some people who wouldn't be on board, that's every single issue that comes before us. You're never going to please everybody. But when people show up in numbers and say, "Listen to me, I need a platform, I want to be heard," you take a step back, you listen, you do what they ask, at least I do. And who, the other five people who voted for it, we do. It's embarrassing. And you all don't have to go to North Minneapolis and face the people who always feel like they're not listened to. This council, the president just said himself this week that this is a system that's hard for people to access. And now today, it's easy. Let them access what we want to give to them. We could have done so much better than this. This board could have been exactly what people on all sides wanted, had we took the time to listen to everybody, come together as a body, and get, I really believe this could have had a unanimous vote if we had done the work. But because people are so in a rush to do what they said, is just bringing a group of stakeholders together to recommend policies, all the fear mongering around what Trump is going to do and what he couldn't do, I hope that my colleagues wouldn't let any of that happen. It's our board, it's our job as elected officials to make sure that doesn't happen. It's not this board's job. They can't vote on policy, they can recommend it, but it's our job to make sure whatever Trump is proposing or going to do, that we stop it, not the Labor Standards Board. The Labor Standards Board is going to give us recommendations. It is our job to make policy, strong policy, to protect our workers and our business owners, not one or the other, both, everyone in this city. So the idea that Donald Trump is going to swoop in and change something because of a Labor Standards Board is wrong and is fear mongering. This council is going to make sure that he doesn't have an impact on this city. It's our job to do so. Local elections matter for that reason.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'll be voting no on this today on behalf of all the businesses in Ward Three and their employees, employees who didn't have a chance to speak publicly. The, you have the votes to pass this today, I see which way this is going to go, but this vote is not going to do anything for the empty storefronts on Lake Street, empty storefronts in Uptown, empty storefronts in Downtown, Central Avenue, West Broadway. What this is going to do is send a message to the investment community that Minneapolis is adding yet another layer, another reason to not come here and invest money in affordable housing, to help fill our empty office buildings. And to go back to the business community that has approached me in the third ward, they're telling me that when their leases are up, they're going to move. If they do expand, they're going to expand outside of Minneapolis. And this is so wrong to sit up here and demonize the business community, corporations. They create the jobs, they pay the taxes, they give to charity. This is not going to work for the city. We rushing this, and congratulations, you have the votes to pass it, but you will not have my vote today.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. I just wanted to make a few comments. Without workers in the city, there are no businesses. The workers are the backbone of this city, and they help run and they help run businesses and make sure that folks get the services that they need. And I also just wanted to thank Council Vice President Chuck Tai, Councilwoman Chowdhury, and Councilwoman Cashman for their due diligence on this resolution, for bringing this forward, for taking on a ton of labor on making sure that we got to a point today when we can move forward with this. As I mentioned earlier, this is really important because it gives voices to workers in our city. And I want to thank the three authors and my colleagues who are voting to support this today for listening to workers like my mother, as I mentioned earlier, who worked three jobs to barely make it by because their voices in the city of Minneapolis matter. Their voices deserve to, those voices deserve to have a seat at the table. And when I'm voting for this, I'm voting for people like my mother, who I know are a reflection of this city, who many people in this city work multiple jobs and are still barely able to afford their rent to put food on the table. And I'll just remind folks, this is an advisory board. That means we get to listen and hear from these folks. And we're telling everyone this is an advisory board. We're not telling one one group that this is an advisory board and other person that this is something else. We're telling everyone this is an advisory board. I think we've been very clear on the days here. This is an advisory board. But what this does, it allows us to be able to work with people from all backgrounds. And I look forward to working with those folks particularly as well that are struggling to make it by and hear their voices too. Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Obviously, you know, we've said a lot on this today, but I do want to address what I did learn from small businesses throughout all of this engagement. And I think it is very fair to say that they are under supported from the city and that there is a lot of work to be done with how the city supports the small business community. So these are, these are some of the things I've heard, and I just want to name them so that we can work together on such things. Easier access to and responsiveness from city permitting departments like CPED and the Health Department. There's a business in my ward, 19 Bar. We all know it, love it, burned down. It's rebuilding right now, and they're trying to get their permits through the city and having a very hard time with that. That is something that we can do to help them get up and running faster and get back on their feet. Support for small businesses during reconstruction projects like the Hennepin Avenue Reconstruction. We do not do a good enough job at that. That is something that we can work on. Place-based solutions, like solutions specifically for Uptown businesses. Better outreach to businesses about all of the financial tools that we do have, from BTAP services, facade improvement grants, Great Streets Business District Support Grants, County Elevate Program. How are we making sure that these tools are accessible to all businesses in our community? Invigorating the CPED Small Business Team, and then basic city services, parking, security, you know, public safety response, sidewalks, streetlights. Businesses need high-quality services from the city, and I hear all of that. None of that is in conflict with high workplace and labor standards. And I believe that we can do both, and I'm really excited to pass this policy today.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I want to just first start off by thanking Councilmember Cashman and Council Vice President Chuck Tai for co-authoring this resolution with me, Council Vice President. Before either Councilmember Cashman and I were elected, you were working on this, and just thank you for the years of work on this. Thank you so much to the community members and the workers in our city who work every single day to make sure that our city runs, that businesses are staffed. Thank you so much for taking time out of your workday, taking time off to show up to City Hall and advocate, not just for yourself as an individual, but the collective of workers who aren't able to take the time off today to sit in council chambers. Thank you for engaging with us. Thank you for making your voices heard. Thank you for sharing very vulnerable stories of egregious things that you have experienced in your workplace and being brave enough to say, hey, there are really bad things happening right now to people, working people in our city. It's not all rose tinted glasses. We might have $15 minimum wage. We might have sick and save time. But we're getting hurt at work. We're getting harassed at work. We're getting mistreated. And you're, and you're, what you're saying is, let me have a voice at the table, an equal voice. And thank you to the local businesses for engaging with me and my colleagues. Thank you for sitting down with me at your restaurants and having a dialogue. Thank you to the employers who are supportive of this and took took some time to understand the policy. And I think I I agree with the statement that Councilmember Cashman made that small businesses are under supported by our city institution. I think there's more to be done there, and I think you'll see in this budget cycle, there's going to be multiple amendments in support of local business. I'll be carrying one of those amendments. And I think this kind of just opens up a doorway to say, hey, maybe we need an advisory board for our local business leaders, not to just defend against regulations, but to talk about like, maybe we need to figure out a way to get investments to us that will support us, right? Like, maybe there's more to be discussed here around how we do keep those storefronts open, how we fill the vacant ones. If we're experiencing hardship during construction or there's a crisis and it impacts our operations as a local business, we want to, we want to figure that out. Maybe that's a table we can create. I I want to also just kind of address this feeling of the sky is falling this and with this Labor Standards Board moving forward. I want to root us in the fact, yeah, I named the paradox. While while it is an advisory board, which it is, is advisory board, again, like the the revolutionary part of it is workers get a say, but the sky is not falling for people to get a say at the table. Workers having a say is not going to stop investment from coming into our city. I think that's that's deeply misinformed, and I think it's also deeply shameful to see the way that misinformation has shown up into the doors of some of our local businesses to say that this policy is going to shutter your business. That is so inappropriate to scare a local business owner to say that an advisory board where workers will get an equal say to you is going to shutter your business. That is so wrong to do. And I wanted to call that out today. And I also want to take some time to say that, like, if local businesses are under supported, then workers are far more under supported in our city of Minneapolis. We have so many programs for local businesses that we need to bolster, but there's only like a handful of things in which we engage with workers. And so if today us passing a Labor Standards Resolution to create a board to give them a voice gives us one more tool among very few tools for workers have a voice, then I feel like I I did my job today and I stood with my values and understood that, like, without labor, there is no capital. There is no wealth. There's no tax base. There's no community. There's no success for this city. So I'm super excited that it's here today. I wish our vote today wasn't as divided. I disagree with the point that this is unbalanced. I think finally there's a voice for a segment of people that have been inequitably represented in institutions like the city of Minneapolis. And I do think while we're we're the frontline of the city of Minneapolis under a Trump administration, that doesn't stop the most anti worker, anti-labor Supreme Court for devolving devolving rulings that will impact us here. And so this is us making sure that we can do this small thing today, which is also a big thing because workers have been waiting to have a voice. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on item 12 as amended.
Mr. President, it's been a while since we've maybe looked at the agenda, but there is also a motion with this that returns the underlying original ordinance back to author because of the switch from the first introduction of an ordinance to a resolution. So the motion as amended and the direction to return to author the underlying ordinance.
Correct.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
No.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
No.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitale.
No.
Vice President Chuck Tai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and three nays.
That carries. And the full report is adopted, and that completes the reports of all of our standing committees. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. We have one notice today from Councilmember Osman. This is an amendment to Title One of the Code of Ordinances related to administrative enforcement procedures clarifying that Title 22 Lamb subdivision and Title 23 Heritage Preservation are provisions that are subject to administrative enforcement. Are there any questions on this notice? Seeing none, that notice is hereby given, and no further action is required at this time. The next order of business is introduction and referral calendar. First, pursuant to notice, we have three introductions today from Councilmembers Chavez and Chowdhury and Council Council Vice President Chuck Tai, all of which related to relate to establishing authorized and regulated safe outdoor spaces or individualized outdoor sheltering options for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness. These ordinances, these ordinance amendments are in several chapters located in the Building, Health, and Sanitation and Zoning Codes and are being referred to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee and the Public Health and Safety Committee as listed on the agenda. The fourth introduction is from Councilmember Cashman, who moves to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the License and Business Regulations Code for first reading and referral to the Business Housing and Zoning Committee, amending provisions related to the location restrictions of licensed tobacco dealers. Is there any discussion on these introductions? See, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. You know, I just wanted to just comment on these safe outdoor space ordinances and you know, I I'm not sure who is going to be operating these safe outdoor spaces if they are to occur. We've heard from many, many folks who do engage in that kind of work, that they don't have the capacity and or the, quite frankly, the the willingness because we've had navigation centers which were safe outdoor spaces. And they were very challenged. So we have to build in structures that make it safe for the residents of those safe outdoor spaces if they are to occur as well as the surrounding communities. That has to be a part of the the ordinances as they stand. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne, and thank you, Councilwoman Jenkins. We were able to speak about this at your town hall last week, Councilwoman Chowdhury and I. I'll make it pretty quickly. We're happy to work with you to address any concerns that you have to make sure that we do this policy right. We're not trying to establish these all over the city. We're trying to pilot these these projects to make sure that they are done correctly. I will say, though, that these are not navigation centers, and there has been providers that have been identified as people that support it, like the Twin Cities Recovery Project, who has been communicating with many of us on how they would love to see this in our city. So we're happy to work with, continue to work with you, Councilwoman Jenkins, on any concerns that you have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just popping here to say thank you to Councilmember Jenkins for inviting us to your town hall. That was really, really informative, kind of hearing back from the think tank work that you did in your ward and then just engaging more broadly in that space. I had a pretty large community meeting last night. It was supposed to just be a smaller one, but it evolved into like a 70-plus individual community meeting, and we grappled with, yeah, we grappled with a lot of what we grappled with at your town hall. There was a lot of interest from community members to understand and explore what the safe outdoor space concept could be. Some positive reactions in just thinking about what it means to create more safe, secure transitional housing options that reduce the number of people that might be living within an encampment outside. And so, yeah, I'm looking forward to working on this, very much looking forward to working on this with you and then any of the people that were a part of your think tank. And your think tank honestly inspired me to kind of see if there's a Ward 12 specific type of conversation I should be having too in regards to this policy. So thanks for that.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Vitale.
Thank you. So I had a couple of conversations, just a quick, brief conversations with staff about identifying areas where if these policies are enacted, you know, like where such places can go, and it sounds like there's some places in Ward 12 and Ward Two, some city-owned properties that we have where these, because this is, this is the the policy about like a larger controlled encampment, correct?
No, this is thank Council President Payne. No, that's not what it is. This is a safe outdoor space and a safe parking. There are safe outdoor spaces in Denver, Colorado, and then they can do multiple things. They can be tiny homes. They can be pallets. They can be tents. And then there's safe parking similar to Duluth, Minnesota, which is seasonal, where someone can park their car overnight and get services and meals from a provider. So this is
But a tiny home wouldn't be like a safe outdoor space, would it? You can build tiny homes.
It would be, yes.
Okay, okay. But it is about like identifying some areas where you can have a car, have a tiny home, have a yurt, have a tent.
So, no, not necessarily. This is, one, this is creating ordinances to allow for a place to go through a city process to establish a safe outdoor space and safe parking, not a yard, not an encampment.
No, I'm not saying that that's what you're going to do, but I'm saying that's what could be covered. Like now, you would be able to legally, if this passed, you would be legally able to have those things, whether it's the car, the tent, or whatever in these. If the policy is adopted, you can have these things in a safe door, a safe outdoor space.
You would have a regulated location that you would have to go through a city process, but it wouldn't be, I'm going to set up an encampment.
Yes, no, that's not what I'm saying, Councilwoman Chavez.
Okay.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying is we're going to identify more than likely some city properties, right? I talked to staff about this. They did say there's some Ward 12 and Ward Two city land that something like this could go on, but that's what I'm asking.
Okay, yes.
It would be identifying the city land and then being able to use it for those safe, safe outdoor spaces.
Yes, we would be able to to do that, go through a city process, correct? And it would be anywhere in the city that we would have to figure out where there is land and
Right, right, right.
potential other partners. A church might want to do it. That's not city land too, so.
Okay, so there is a component where like a nonprofit or someone could also apply for, like in Denver, where someone could apply for a permit to have it.
Yep. For example, there might be a church or a nonprofit that has a parking space that maybe will, maybe want to pilot that with the city. That might not be city land, but that would be their land, and they want to pilot a safe parking pilot with the city, so that wouldn't be city land, certainly.
Yeah, so areas for cars maybe, but also areas for yurts and
Not yurts, but but tiny homes. It could be a tent, like structure pods, multiple different structures at a safe outdoor space.
So it's going to, it's specifically excluding yurts and tents?
No, but the the vision where where we want to do is similar to Denver, Colorado. Denver, Colorado does not have yurts.
Okay, so I, I'm sure we'll get further into this, but I'm I can only go by what we see here, right? Like here, we see yurts and we see tents. Maybe they don't have the yurt union in Denver. I don't know. But if the policy allows for them, maybe they'll be here. I think what we need to, what I'm asking is we're looking for a, you're bringing for a policy that allows for what we see here in Minneapolis.
No, incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you're you're bringing up some good questions, Councilmember Vitale, and I think the thing that is important to keep mindful of for all of us, right? Not missing the forest for the trees is we're at the top of the policymaking process. We're going to be looking at Denver, Colorado as like the starting point, but we're we're going to try to make a Minneapolis but we're, we're gonna try to make a Minneapolis-specific policy that works for our residents, our unhoused residents, our city, and I think we'll get into that discussion of like, what type of structure do we think is most favorable for the city of Minneapolis? Also, thinking about like the type of climate that we have here in our city. And then just quick, wanted to note something that Councilmember Chavez lifted up. In the, I believe in the twenty-twenty-three legislative session, the state passed a law that allows faith-based organizations like churches to have zoning that allows them to build tiny home structures within their parking lot. So, there's partnerships that we can build here with those organizations, that'll be a part of the discussion for a safe outdoor space model.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, actually, I think Councilmember Chowdhury just answered my question. And it was this, wouldn't a tiny home be considered a permanent structure, like that, that's not a safe outdoor space? But maybe within the body of this work that you're taking on, what you're saying is we might allow things like tiny homes in places that they weren't previously zoned. And I just want to make clear that that would be different types of allowances than what we have now, like with the Avivo Tiny Home Project that's housed within a warehouse here, I'm see, I'm seeing Councilmember Chowdhury nod in agreement that that's where we're going.
I think, and I, again, we're gonna need to have the policy discussion through the chair to answer Councilwoman Palmasano's question. I'm super excited to kind of share some of the research that we've been doing, there's, there's vendors that can literally give like structures that can be built up to build like a tiny home, but then like, like taken apart and stored away. And so, there's things here that we can consider that might not have been in the mainstream frame of mind for how we're building these structures, but again, that's like getting into the weeds, happy to have that discussion as we get further along.
Yeah, thank you, I would like to have that discussion as you get further along. And I appreciate we need some type of relief valve.
What you want to do?
I know this is coming down right now.
Oh, they're having a press conference.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going into my office.
Okay, I'll just take my time.
Absolutely.
Alright.
Alright, alright. See you later.
Just kind of line up and let's leave a gap for speaker halls. So, I think you guys will be there. And maybe, please, some islands or anything like that.
Well, sure, speak in the back way when everybody's waiting for you.
Welcome, hello, thank you all for being here. My name is Aisha Chugtai and I'm, I have the privilege of representing Ward 10 residents on the Minneapolis City Council and serving as the Vice President of our Minneapolis City Council. I am so proud to be here, celebrating the passage as the lead author of a Labor Standards Board in Minneapolis. After over two years of tireless advocacy from workers, hard work from council authors, and participation and feedback from countless residents and stakeholders, today, a Labor Standards Board has finally passed. I've been a working-class person my entire life. My father was a mechanic, my mom was a domestic worker, I come from a family of educators. People like me and my family have always been the workers that leaders refuse to listen to, who refuse to hear them. I live in the Whittier neighborhood where most of my neighbors also struggle to get by. I have always trusted the voice of workers, from living with my family to working for a union to being an elected official. That's what this board is about. It's about working-class people having a seat at the table. It's about workers who are the experts in their own working conditions, having a seat at the table. We've seen a lot of disinformation and false confusion implying that that is not true. People have intentionally muddied the waters on what this board is about and what its powers are, and that is because special interest groups oppose giving working people a voice at the table. I'm proud today that my colleagues sought through that and rejected delay tactics, rejected tactics to, to further confuse and, 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 and water down this policy and instead, create this advisory body. This policy is a product of compromise. The mayor wanted to ensure that there was consensus building on the board, and so, as authors, we added a provision to ensure that one, one member of, of the, the, the workers represented on the board, on a sectoral board, one representative of employers and one representatives, representative of community experts was on board to, to pass a policy to make a recommendation to the council. That ensures that people work together to find consensus. We heard from business owners that they wanted more resources about new recommendations. We added ensuring that they were surveyed, including on what type of education they needed in their sector. When business associations asked us for the equivalent of a certified worker organization for them to be the ones directly surveying employers, council member Cashman brought forward an amendment to do just that. The idea that this policy has not had input, that it is a one-sided policy, those things are false. Ultimately, the reason we are here today is because workers are standing with me and they have been on the front lines of driving this policy forward. Years ago, when they asked the city to create a Labor Standards Board so they could have a voice at the table, they've talked to members, they've talked to elected leaders, and have continued to organize despite every single bureaucratic hurdle and obstacle placed in their way. So this victory belongs to all of you. Thank you. We are better off when you lead, we are better off when workers lead, our communities are better off when workers lead, when we listen to their voices, when we put their experiences at the center of solution creation. So, thank you all, and with that, I want to welcome Estela from Situl to say a few words.
Good afternoon to everybody who is present. I have been a part of this struggle since the very beginning, and you don't know how proud and happy I am and I feel to have continued this process and to be at this moment of great victory. I have been working downtown for several years, and for the first time, I feel a new kind of hope for what is to come and the changes that we will win together. As a mother, I am incredibly excited about the possibilities that this board and the tables bring forward to us. Like paid sick days, and not having to choose between paid sick days and vacation, like paid holidays and time for maternity. As a worker and a community member, I will continue to speak out and raise my voice and educate my fellow workers about our rights. I hope that more workers communicate and learn about the fight for our futures. We are many, and we are strong when we are united by a common vision, for our dignity and for our families. To the council members, I thank you, many millions and thousands of thanks for the, for standing strong in this fight. You have taken a giant step forward to ensuring the well-being of thousands of workers in Minneapolis. To the business community, we all want to see a revitalized downtown, one that is vibrant, full of life, and works for everyone. I am confident that together, we can make this happen. And to the mayor, I ask that you think this through and you make the correct decision. A fair Minneapolis is a strong Minneapolis. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Rupke, and I'm so glad that Labor Standards Boards have finally passed. Thank you to the council members for listening to us and giving workers a seat at the table. I've worked for First Service, a condo management company, for about two years. First Service manages and staffs many of the biggest condo buildings in downtown Minneapolis. My role as a desk attendant is to ensure the safety and satisfaction of condo residents, and my responsibilities include watching the security cameras for suspicious activity, doing regular walks around the building, receiving deliveries, and handling resident requests to use parking spots and guest suites. I enjoy my work, but I've also experienced many of the problems that are widespread in the condo management industry. Wage growth in the industry is slow, and healthcare coverage is far beyond what nearby unionized security and janitorial workers have. And one of, uh, one of the most frustrating issues in my industry is how hard it is for so many of us to even just take time off work. Many of us at First Service have tried to get the company to sit down and discuss these issues with us, but they still have not done so. Rent is going up, the cost of food is going up, and we still aren't getting the pay and transparency we need from this multinational company. Today is exciting, today is an exciting day, because workers like me now have a path forward. I am so grateful that the authors and supporters on the city council listen to the challenges workers in my industry are facing. Passing the Labor Standards Board resolution means Minneapolis workers will finally have a seat at the table to make our jobs better. It's a great example of how local government can bring together different stakeholders to solve problems. My coworkers and I have been pushing for a Labor Standards Board for the last two years, and we're excited and grateful that the city council made it a reality. Now that it's moving to the mayor's desk, we fully expect him to sign it because of the great things this resolution will do for the city. Thank you everyone for your support. When we fight!
We win!
When we fight!
We win!
When we fight!
We win!
In English, that means, "The people united can never be defeated." And I've said a lot about this policy already today, so I'm not going to speak very much, but I will say that, as a representative on the city council, as a representative of the city of Minneapolis, I am extremely proud that we not only believe in economic justice in theory, but we also fight for it in practice, and that's what we're doing here today. I'm extremely excited to see how everyone standing behind me will have the opportunity to make their voice heard in the coming years, and Minneapolis will be stronger and better for it. So, thank you all, um, I'll pass it off to council member Oreen Chowdhury.
Thank you, my name is Oreen Chowdhury. I am the council member representing the 12th ward in Minneapolis, and I'm proud to be a co-author of the Labor Standards Board resolution today, and I'm proud that we passed it. I'm gonna try to keep my comments brief, because yeah, I spoke a lot about this in council committee today. I think the, the thing that I'll say here is, I, I, I stepped up for this job to fight for working families and working people in our community, and it's not lost on anyone, at least it shouldn't be, that working people are really struggling right now in the city of Minneapolis and across the country. There is real economic anxiety that's happening here, and the best and very least thing we can do is say, hey, workers deserve a seat at the table to share their concerns and improve their workplaces so they can do the job that they want to show up for, that is required of them, but they can also live a safe, dignified, healthy life, and they have a voice. Over and over today, a quote kept on coming up to my mind, and that quote is, "Capital is only the fruit of labor and could have never existed if labor had not first existed. Labor is superior to capital and deserves much the higher consideration." That's Abraham Lincoln. And we're give, the higher consideration we're giving today is saying, in an inequitable system, workers get to have a voice at a Labor Standards Board and get to come together with employers and community stakeholders like academics, consumer advocates, regulators like the Department of Labor and Industry, to give us, as policymakers, robust recommendations with research and consensus behind it. So, I am ecstatic to see this pass, I am ecstatic to see the board be implemented in May, and see how this will further our goals as the city of Minneapolis to be responsive and caring of the working people and residents that we serve in the city of Minneapolis. So, thank you. At this time, we'll take your questions.
Um, two years ago, I stood on the steps of Minneapolis City Hall alongside the mayor and almost every council member to say that we supported a Labor Standards Board and we would work swiftly to enact one. Here we are, um, and in that time, there has been a tremendous amount of community engagement done, stakeholder perspectives considered, compromises made to better accommodate all parties. Council members, uh, our, our council leadership last term, council member Jenkins and council member Palmasano, along with six other council members, uh, changed the way that we, uh, do appointed boards and commissions in this city. A part of the change that they made was when advisory bodies like this come to exist, that, um, that public hearings are not conducted on such a matter. Um, I think if they have regrets about the choices they made at the time, all ordinances are created to be amended when needed. That's something I would really welcome. Um, but we followed the process to a T and we did our very best, our very best to consider every perspective we could to make sure that this is a, a strong policy. every perspective we could to make sure that this is a, a strong policy. A Labor Standards Board, the broader board, is made up of 15 members. Um, the sectoral work group is made up of 12 members. Um, in order for a sectoral work group to make policy recommendations, they need a simple majority, but that simple majority must also include at least one worker representative, at least one employer representative, and at least one community stakeholder representative. Um, so that is, that's how decisions are, are made.
You of course made it very clear that you represent the workers. Do you think you're also representing the small businesses in your force?
Absolutely. I'll have council member Cashman speak to that.
Thank you. I do want to speak to this because over the course of many, many months, there has been a large pushback to this from the business community, both large corporations, international corporations, as well as small businesses in our community. And I'll just say that what I've learned is that the city is not doing enough to support small business. There are many things that they share that they need that are so valid. They need their permitting processes through the city to move quicker. They need support during street reconstructions. They need streetlights, they need sidewalks to be maintained, they need a vast public safety response when they have security concerns at their business. There are so many ways that the city can better support small businesses, and it's my commitment to work on those things with them and to deliver in our 2025 budget and in the coming years on how we can better serve them as well. And business interests are not in conflict with labor standards, and that's what our policy discussion has been, is that strong workforce standards and conditions are not in conflict with thriving small business community here in Minneapolis.
Does someone, maybe from the union or in the council, want to talk about what is, what is the first, I guess, priority that you hope this board will come up with? Is it about wages? Is it about power? Is it about sick time? Is it about anything else? I'm trying to figure out why the business media is so frightened by segments of the business community.
Um, so, the, the sectoral work groups study specific sectors, um, so, you know, policies like you're, you're bringing up, right, increased wages, um, more sick time, uh, the way those exist in our city right now is they're, they're systemic, right? Everyone, um, every worker in this city earns the same minimum wage depending on the size of their employer, everyone has sick days. Um, so, sector-specific, um, policy solutions are, are really the, the overarching goal and, and the most, um, important, uh, thing that we can get from, from this board. Um, intentionally, that choice is left to the board to make, right? Um, for the board to consider, there is a process by which, uh, workers can petition to the board to, to have their industry, um, studied more specifically at the end of the, the day, even then, that choice is ultimately left to the board. Go ahead.
I, I just want to note, like, there, there isn't some sort of, like, secret plan that's happening here, right? Uh, I don't think we've gotten deeper into, like, what is this Labor Standards Board going to, like, work on first and what are their first priorities, because it's been the priority to pass the policy, and now we have to go through a whole appointment structure, we have to sunset the Workplace Advisory Committee, uh, our commission, but I'll just say, like, if you see who's represented here today, we have workers that are condo workers that are citing egregious workplace issues. Uh, we've spoken with many janitors who have been undercut and underpaid and don't have the benefits that they need, and the high-road employers, they're at an economic disadvantage when those low-road employers get away with doing that. Um, and we also have, uh, childcare providers here as well that are interested and intrigued and want to talk about this really important industry of childcare that we're seeing lots of crises in. So, those are some of the things, just pulling behind the curtain a little bit, that we're hearing and we're discussing, and we're excited to give, uh, we're excited to give this opportunity for this board to come up, come together and make their priorities and then form the work groups and then have a dialogue with us as a council.
All right. Any last question?
And the last chant was, "If we fight, we win."
When we fight, we win, yeah.
Should we do it? When we fight, we win! When we fight, we win! When we fight, we win!
Everybody take two steps back, we get the banner in front with our champion. Two steps backwards. Can this move?
Yeah. Don't want to mess with anyone's courts, no. I know, I'm like, that wasn't, I'm like, this is not what our people want to hear. Our people are tired, it was an exhausting election. They don't want to see us all, and stuff like that.
I don't know if Vito just puts on a show when she knows that she, that she, that she would, uh...
I, I never try to understand other people's minds, I can't.
No, no, that's fine, go to the next.
No. Yeah, well, thanks for being here.